Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this round of the meeting.
Recording in progress.
This is Ms. Sandra O'Connor. I'd like to welcome you to the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Please note that this meeting is being conducted in person and online. If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during the meeting, please email Luke Carter at lucaslucas.carter@greensboro-nc.gov. Members of the commission are appointed by City Council and serve without pay. The commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. The procedure used at all public hearings is as follows. Planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary on how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Other persons in favor of the request speak for a total of 10 minutes shared with the applicant. Speakers opposed to the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in favor of the request will share five minutes of rebuttal time. Those in opposition to the request will share five minutes of rebuttal time. Any commission member may ask questions once the presenter has completed their presentation. All commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. In an effort to run the meeting more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the Planning Department and in which commission members do not feel necessitate in-depth discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation of these expedited cases, and applicants may have up to two minutes to address the commission if they desire to provide any additional information they want the commission to know. Expedited cases will then follow the procedures outlined previously. All denied cases and all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. All denied cases and all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing. All ordinances receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by City Council. When the case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak online will need to use the raise hand function, and you will be called upon to speak in the order in which hands were raised. Please find the raise hand function under the reaction button. People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium. When you're called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please also direct all comments and questions to the zoning commission. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. This meeting is being recorded and televised on Greensboro Television Network. In addition, the telecast is being closed, captioned, for the hearing impaired. At this point, I'd like to have the commissioners introduce themselves to you. I'll start at my far right.
I'm Betty Turner.
Warshe Downing.
Keith Peterson.
Catherine Maggott.
Mary Skeens.
Erica Glass.
Paul Gilmour Senior.
Thank you, and I understand Mr. Engel will be here, but he's running a few minutes behind. In addition, we need to have some comments from our staff attorney.
Thank you, Chair O'Connor, and good evening, everyone. Tonight, much of the Planning and Zoning Commission's work will be with considering rezoning applications. When the commission considers these rezoning applications, they make a determination that's based on the land uses that are allowed under the proposed zoning district that's been put forth in the application, and if there are any proposed conditions, those conditions as well. Land use concerns can be wide-reaching, right? Things that are germane in these hearings can be wide-reaching, and by way of example, would include impact on public infrastructure such as traffic concerns. These are relevant when new land uses would be allowed by a rezoning. But the commission is not here to design a site specifically, right? These specific details are supported by technical staff. Much of that work happens not in this forum. Additionally, there are a number of concerns that are not related to land use or the conditions of a rezoning application. These would include generalized concerns about crime rates, for example. Those sort of matters are not germane to the determinations that are made by this body. Such issues can be referred to the Planning Department or the Technical Review Committee as appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Based on some of the email comments that we received, it seems that one of the issues on tonight's agenda may present some, there may be some confusion about it. We do have on our agenda this evening to discuss the Neighborhood Overlay District on West Friendly Avenue. We do not have on our agenda specific zoning requests related to that. Mr. Kirkman, could you make some clarification? Or, Mr.?
I can make a brief comment on that, Chair O'Connor, and certainly Mr. Kirkman may want to follow up. But yeah, the public hearing tonight is broadly about the decision of whether or not to adopt the overlay district plan. The zoning commission would be hearing that for purposes of making a recommendation, and it's going to go up to council. Any decisions about a specific, you know, project that would be in that area are just, they're not subject to the hearing tonight. Those are administrative determinations made again, not in this forum. So we're here to talk about the overlay district, not specific projects.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkman, do we have any withdrawals or continuances?
So there's two items to note for the commission, and they're in your agenda. Item Z-2409005 for 2003 Athena Court has been withdrawn by the applicant, so there's no hearing on that item this evening and no action needed by the commission. We would also note that the discussion about consideration of the Randallman Road Corridor Plan Phase 2 is going to be moved to the October Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. Again, no action is necessary by the commission.
Thank you. In addition to that, we talked at our opening remarks about having an accelerated agenda for items that had no opposition. So this is your last chance. These are the items that we potentially will put on our accelerated agenda this evening. We will consider those ahead of the regular matters. If there is anybody here who wants to speak in opposition to one of these cases that I'm going to mention, you need to let us know now so that we do not put it on the accelerated agenda. As far as we understand, there is no one here that wants to speak in opposition to matter Z-2409001, which is 3607 and 3609 Summit Avenue. No one here to speak in opposition to PLP-2427, Z-2409002, which is 5101, 5101ZZ, and 5106 Summit Avenue. There is no one here to speak in opposition to PLP-2430, Z-2409003. There is no one here to speak in opposition to Z-2409004, 4604, and 4608 North Church Street. There is no one here to speak in opposition to Z-2409006, 1915 Boulevard Street. There's no one here to speak in opposition to PLP-2432, Z-2409007, a portion of 4544 Jessup Grove Road. There's no one here to speak in opposition, excuse me, it's not a public hearing, we have some modifications for West Cone Boulevard. There is, and we have some street closures in the corridor plan. So all the cases that I mentioned will be on our accelerated agenda because there was no opposition to those. But our first order of business, of course, is to approve our minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott, move to approve our minutes. Ms. Skeens seconded. Oh, I'm sorry. Who seconded? Mr. Gilmour seconded the motion. And just as a reminder to the commissioners, for the sake of those who transcribe our minutes, it's helpful if you say your name before you make your motion so they just have it when they're recording our minutes. So thank you for that. We'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended earlier this week, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, then those minutes are approved, and we will move to our accelerated agenda. The first item on the accelerated agenda will be item Z-2409001, a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family 5 and CDRM8 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8 to CDRM12 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12 for the properties identified as 3607 and 3609 Summit Avenue, generally described as west of Summit Avenue and north of Cherry Lane, 21.52 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that it contains approximately 21.52 acres and is located west of Summit Avenue and north of Cherry Lane. This is a rezoning request from R5 to Conditional District RM8, or, sorry, and Conditional District RM8 to Conditional District RM12. North of the request contains property that is zoned CDRM8 and R5. East of the request is zoned RM8 and RM12. South and west of the request are zoned RM5. The subject property currently, one of the properties that is part of the subject properties contains a single-family dwelling, the other is undeveloped. North of the request is undeveloped. There's a religious assembly use to the east, manufactured home park to the southeast, another religious assembly use to the south, single-family dwellings to the south, and railroad line to the west. These are the conditions that were presented by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates the subject property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CDRM12 zoning district as condition would allow for multifamily dwellings and uses that are compatible with the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from commission members? No questions? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Okay, not necessary. Then without further comment, we will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, I recommend we do the annexation, PLP-24-27.
Not annexation on this one.
We're on the 20th.
Yeah, this one is Z-24-09001. There's another one that is Summit Avenue. That one will be next.
I've revised their request. This is Keith Peterson again, as obtains item Z-24-09-001, 3607 and 3609 Summit Avenue. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 3607 and 3609 Summit Avenue from R5 Residential Single Family and CDMRMA Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8 to CD-RM12 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed CDM-RM12 zoning district as condition permits the use that fits the context of surrounding area and limits negative impact on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public's interest.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Maggott. Any further comments? None? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15, 2024, City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And now we get to the other Summit Avenue. Item PLP-24-27 and Z-2409002, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family 3 for the properties identified as 5101, 5101ZZ, and 5106 Summit Avenue, a portion of Summit Avenue right-of-way and a portion of Candle Nut Road right-of-way, generally described as west and east of Summit Avenue and north of Candle Nut Road, 2.23 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property. You'll notice that subject properties are on both sides of Summit Avenue. There are residential structures on the same, owned by the same person, on both sides. And so they, including the area within Summit Avenue, are a part of the request. The current zoning on both properties is County RS30. The request is to annex it and zone it City R3. North of the request is zoned County RS30 with a manufactured home overlay, and east and west, or east of the request is also zoned County RS30, and west of the request is City CDR5. Again, there are single-family dwellings on both parcels, single-family dwellings to the north, east, south, and west. This is a straight rezoning request, so there are no conditions that have been proposed. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates the subject property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plans Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed R3 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family detached residential development up to three dwelling units per acre, and the proposed original zoning request allows uses that are similar to the uses that are present on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments?
He's indicated none.
Seeing none, without comment, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for two motions, one first for annexation and the second one for the zoning.
Catherine Maggott, I'd like to make a motion to annex PLP-24-27.
Keith Peterson, second.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Peterson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries then a motion on the zoning, please.
Regarding item Z-24-09-002, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 5101, 5101ZZ, and 5106 Summit Avenue, a portion of Summit Avenue right-of-way and a portion of Candle Nut Road right-of-way, generally described as west and east of Summit Avenue and north of Candle Nut Road, 2.23 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property. You'll notice that subject properties are on both sides of Summit Avenue. There are residential structures on the same, owned by the same person, on both sides. And so they, including the area within Summit Avenue, are a part of the request. The current zoning on both properties is County RS30. The request is to annex it and zone it City R3. North of the request is zoned County RS, sorry, County RS30. South of the request is zoned County RS30 with a manufactured home overlay, and east and west, or east of the request is also zoned County RS30, and west of the request is City CDR5. Again, there are single-family dwellings on both parcels, single-family dwellings to the north, east, south, and west. This is a straight rezoning request, so there are no conditions that have been proposed. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates the subject property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plans Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed R3 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family detached residential development up to three dwelling units per acre, and the proposed original zoning request allows uses that are similar to the uses that are present on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments?
He's indicated none.
Seeing none, without comment, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for two motions, one first for annexation and the second one for the zoning.
Catherine Maggott, I'd like to make a motion to annex PLP-24-27.
Keith Peterson, second.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Peterson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries then a motion on the zoning, please.
Regarding item Z-24-09-002, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 5101, 5101ZZ, and 5106 Summit Avenue, a portion of Summit Avenue right-of-way and a portion of Candle Nut Road right-of-way, from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family to be consistent with the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The result is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public's interest.
Commissioner Gilmour, second.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Gilmour, and welcome to Mr. Engel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This constitutes a favorable recommendation, and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15, 2024, City Council meeting. Thank you. The next item on our expedited agenda is item PLP-24-30 and Z-2409003, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family 3 for the property identified as 5508 Hilltop Road and a portion of Hilltop Road right-of-way, generally described as north of Hilltop Road and east of Chelsea Acre Court, 1.41 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling and is zoned County RS40. The proposal is to annex the property and bring it into the city with a City R3 zoning classification. North, east, and west of the request are zoned County RS40. South of the request is zoned City R3. There are single-family dwellings to the north, east, and west, and there's a religious assembly use to the south. And for those who are in the audience while I'm looking through, a lot of the annexation requests that we have are for the purpose of getting access to city utilities, so these are pretty basic requests, but that's the reason for the annexation and the original zoning. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan currently designates the subject property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the Comprehensive Plans Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices, and the filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, and attend school to make for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed R3 zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family detached residential development up to three dwelling units per acre. The proposed original zoning request allows uses that are present on adjacent tracks. I can answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners have any questions? The applicant has up to two minutes if you want to make any additional comments. Seeing none, then without comment, we will close the public hearing. In this case, we'll be looking for two motions, one for annexation and then one for zoning.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, I recommend the annexation of PLP-24-30.
Mary Skeens, second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Skeens. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries, then we're looking for a motion on the zoning, please. Erica Glass, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that it's, excuse me, let me back up. This is regarding item Z-24-09-003. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 5508 Hilltop from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family 3 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Built Form Map and Future Land Use Map. The proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public's interest.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Glass and Ms. Turner. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15, 2024, City Council meeting. The next item on our expedited agenda is item Z-2409004, a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family 5 to CDRM8 Conditional District Residential Multifamily 8 for the properties identified as 4604 and 4608 North Church Street, generally described as east of North Church Street and north of Old Lake Genette Road, 3.52 acres. Street and north of Old Lake Jeanette Road, 3.56 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the surrounding, of the subject property and the surrounding area. The subject property is currently zoned City R5, and they are making a request to go to conditional district RM8. You will notice that north of the request is City R7, east and south of the request is CD for conditional district RM5, west of the request is conditional district office, conditional district residential multifamily 8, and conditional district R5. There are single-family dwellings on the subject properties now. To the north of the request are single-family dwellings. There are multifamily dwellings to the east and the south. There's an office use to the, to the west, and multifamily and single-family dwellings to the, to the west and northwest. This is the condition that has been proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to arrange our land uses for more vibrant and livable Greensboro, and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life, a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed CD RM8 zoning district, as conditioned, would allow a mix of appropriately dense uses that have an intensity generally compatible with the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, would the applicant like to take up to two minutes to make any additional comments? The applicant is fine with it. Then without objection, we will close the public hearing. Looking for a motion, please.
Regarding Z 24-09-004, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 4664 and 46, 4604 and 4608 North Church Street, from R5 residential single-family 5 to CD RM8 conditional district residential multifamily 8, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed CD RM8 zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second.
Thank you Ms. Turner and Mr. Downing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our accelerated agenda is item Z 24-09-006, a rezoning request from O Office to CDCM conditional district commercial medium for the property identified as 1615 Boulevard Street, generally described as east of Boulevard Street and west of South Holden Road, 1.5 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it is currently zoned Office, and the request is to rezone it to conditional district commercial medium. North of the request is zoned RM18, east of the request is RM18 and conditional district commercial medium. South of the request is Office, and east of the request is conditional district commercial low. This shows that on the subject property there's currently an assisted living facility. It was a building that was formerly used as an assisted living facility. North of the request is undeveloped land. East of the request are multifamily dwellings and a special events facility. South of the request is a multi-tenant office complex. And then west of the request is religious assembly These are the conditions that were proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plan's filling in our framework strategy to provide accessible public recreation centers, libraries, neighborhood park facilities, and other social services to sustain livable neighborhoods, to sustain livable neighborhoods, and the creating great places strategy to work towards providing housing for all residents in Greensboro. The proposed CDCM zoning district, as conditioned, would allow uses in the social service facilities and office use categories, and the proposed uses are compatible with existing uses on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do any commissioners have questions?
Well, the only statement I have is that I do see a small error in the letter that went out to the neighbors. It's a small error. The last three digits says 005, and this is the case 006. So probably a small error on the outreach of the particular company, but I just wanted to add that.
Thank you Mr. Downing. Could staff clarify for us some of the other types of uses that are available in this type of zoning for either office or the social services besides the beds?
Yes, and the social service facilities, Mike is pulling that use group up now, but the office use categories are general office-type uses. You would also, I can't remember all of the uses right off the top of my head in the, in the use group. Give us just a second.
So social service facilities, I'll start with that one. Office was the easier one, honestly. With that, I mean, that's basically the uses that are there to provide social services and may have a transit housing component to it, which is the reason for the rezoning this evening to the commercial medium district on there. So it includes other things, including shelters for the homeless for transit lodging, temporary emergency shelters, which would be specific to emergency situations on there, soup kitchens, food banks, group care facilities, and orphanages. So that's that use group. The office use group, as Mr. Carter was initiating, is pretty much your general office uses. So a variety of office uses generally would have set hours of operation, would generally limit an activity. Obviously, in this case, the applicant has conditioned down how big the facility can be in terms of the number of beds to also keep the scale of the activity down.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, yeah. Were there any other questions? Would the applicant like to make any additional comments? Have up to two minutes. Seeing none, then without comment, we will close the public hearing. We'll look for a motion, please.
Yes, this is Warshay Downing. I'd like to make a motion in regard to agenda item, agenda item Z 24-09-006 at 1915 Boulevard Street. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 1915 Boulevard Street from Office O to CDCM conditional district commercial medium to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDCM zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Catherine Maggott.
Thank you Mr. Downing and Ms. Maggott. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our accelerated agenda is item PLP 24-32 and Z 24-09-007, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS 40 residential single-family to City CD RM5 conditional district residential multifamily 5 for the property identified as a portion of 4544 Jessup Grove Road, generally described as north of Jessup Grove Road and east of Lewiston Road, 3.08 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it is currently zoned County RS 40. This request is for an annexation and original zoning from County RS 40 to City CD RM5. North of the request is zoned County RS 40. East and west of the request are zoned County RS 40 and City R3. And south of the request is zoned City R3. This is the aerial map of the subject property. This actually shows the single-family dwelling on the property. That is no longer there, so the property's undeveloped at this time. North of the request is actually a portion of the subject property that is not part of this request. And then east of the request is, is a religious assembly use. And south, and southwest of the request are single-family dwellings. West of the request is an agricultural use and single-family dwellings. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plans creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life, a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connection strategy to work to ensure equality, quantity, and diversity of housing choices across and between neighborhoods. The proposed CD R5 zoning district, as conditioned, would limit permitted uses to residential uses including duplexes, townhouses, and twin homes. The request represents a small increase in residential density while allowing for greater flexibility on lot configuration and expanding housing types. The requested uses are compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
We have any questions? Seeing none, if the applicant would like, you can have up to two minutes of additional time. They're fine with that. Seeing no additional comments, then we will close the public hearing. And we'll look for two motions, one for annexation and then one for zoning.
I would move that we annex the property.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you Mr. Engel and Mr. Downing. Ask for the second. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, then we'll look for a zoning motion, please.
In regards to agenda item Z-24-09-007, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at a portion of 4544 Jessup Grove Road from County RS 40 residential single-family to City CD-RM-5 conditional district residential multifamily 5 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed City CD-RM-5 zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Keith Pease in second.
Thank you Mr. Engel and Mr. Peterson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting. We'll now revert to our regular agenda. And so the next item on our agenda to consider is item Z 24-06-003, a rezoning request from CD RM8 conditional district residential multifamily 8 to PUD planned unit development, and consideration of a required unified development plan for the property identified as 1322 Bothwell Street, generally described as south of Bothwell Street and north of US Highway 29, 1.698 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning, this is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it is currently zoned CD RM8. The request is to rezone it to planned unit development. And there's also a consideration of a unified development plan with this request. North of the request is zoned R5, conditional district public and institutional, and straight public and institutional. East of the request is zoned PI. South of the request is zoned LI for light industrial, and west of the request is zoned R5. This is an image of the subject property. It's an aerial photo. The property is currently undeveloped. North of the request contains single-family dwellings, a park, and a hospital. East of the request contains an outdoor advertising sign, also known as a billboard. South of the request contains US Highway 29, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings. This is the subject property as seen from Bothwell Street. And this is a single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned R5. It's another single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned R5. This image shows the park that's located north of the request, zoned CD PI. This image shows the hospital located northeast of the request, zoned PI, and this is on Southside Boulevard. This image shows the billboard that is located east of the request, and this is back on Bothwell Street, and this is zoned PI. And this image shows Highway 29 located south of the request, zoned LI. And this image shows a single-family dwelling located southwest of the request on Bothwell Street, zoned R5. And these are single-family dwellings located west of the request on Bothwell Street, also zoned R5. This view is facing northeast on Bothwell Street. The subject property is on the right. And this view is facing southwest on Bothwell Street. The subject property is on the left. The applicant has proposed some additions and tweaks to the zoning conditions, and I'll read those into the record now. The first condition is proposed to read permitted uses are limited to single-family detached dwellings, duplexes, traditional houses, townhouses, and twin homes. Number two is the maximum unit count shall not exceed 34 units. Number three is building height shall not exceed 50 feet. And then new condition number four is exterior building facade materials shall consist of no less than 70% wood, stone, glass, brick, cementitious material, and composite materials. In vinyl or aluminum siding shall not be permitted. And we're asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to accept those into the record.
Okay, so do we need a separate motion for that?
Yes ma'am.
So can I have a motion on the new conditions, please?
Catherine Maggott, I'd like to make a motion to include these new conditions.
Thank you Ms. Maggott. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Those new conditions are added. Do we have any more questions for staff regarding the presentation?
I'll just note that staff's recommending approval of this request. I'll go through the recommendations and then I'll accept questions at that time, too.
Certainly, thank you.
The G S O two thousand and forty comprehensive plan designates the site as urban central on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed P U D zoning district as condition would allow residential uses that are generally compatible with the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent tracks. I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines? Do you have a copy of the U D P that you can put on the overhead?
Yes, ma'am.
Speak, yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question for the developer. You know, that property has a huge dip. Are they gonna build it up to street level or a little bit above street level?
I'll let the applicant address that in his minutes.
Any other questions for staff? If not, then we have up to ten minutes available for the applicant and anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application. If you'd come to the podium and identify yourself with your name and address, please. While he's coming forward, if anybody else intends to speak in favor, if you wanted to go ahead and line up over on the side so you'd be ready to speak after he's finished, that would be fine. Hello, if you'd give your name and address, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Joseph Rogers, Managing Director for Rogers Acquisition and Development. Address is one four zero five one Over Million Drive, Punta's real, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Just wanted to just quickly speak about this project. I initially engaged with the community around January of this year. And I had a pretty audacious vision that after hearing the community, listening to them intently, realized that that vision just didn't quite fit. And we had to scale it back. We scaled it back multiple times. My original plan was, excuse me, was seventy-two units of affordable housing. But obviously, putting such an asset at that corner just did not fit with the overall scheme of the community and the area. We went back and forth several times where we landed on a max of thirty-four units. Our current plan calls for twenty-nine for sale townhome affordable, townhome units there. And our goal would be to build that in conjunction with a, with Dreamkeep Partners. They're also an affordable housing developer out of Charlotte, North Carolina. I know there is two items that I know are still outstanding for the community. And I want to go on record to state that I'm not deaf to those concerns. One is the on-street parking. Currently, as Luke showed earlier, that intersection right between the hospital and our location, the concern is once we put these twenty-nine townhomes there, individuals will park there. I shared with the community at the last meeting that once we get into planning, we will look at that and maximize parking on-site. Our current plan calls for one-car garage with a parking space outside of the garage for each of the townhomes. We have ample space that we can add additional parking. Along with that, we're gonna have an H O A who we're gonna partner with to really enforce the culture of that area to ensure that we're enforcing non-on-street parking. There is currently signs on their road that call for no on-street parking as well. So we just intend to push that even further. The other concern is the turn radius. If we do have on-street parking there, which is a safety concern, that obviously buses come along there, I think I've heard multiple times at four-thirty in the morning, that will become an issue where individual buses can't make that turn. And I believe at the last meeting, we did have a chance to talk, I'm not sure if it's head of transportation, they did take a bus out there and said, hey, Mr. Rogers, that will be a concern there. So we're fully aware of that, and we realize that that's something that we can only solve once we get into design. Our hope and aspiration is that we can work with D L T, work with the city, and possibly do a curb cut on the right side of that, which gives a little more credence and width along that corner there. So overall, we think from a development perspective, from a zoning perspective, what we're proposing benefits both the city. It gives a diversity of housing types in that community. It also allows for for sale, which obviously is going to allow stability in the community without jeopardizing property value. Our price point for these for sale affordable units are right in line with what the current values are in that community to allow, to obviously not have a negative impact on any of the property values there. So again, we're fully aware as a development team that those at my last meeting with the community last Thursday, maybe Thursday before last, that was the last two remaining issues was addressing the on-street parking, which we are gonna attack by adding additional parking on-site once we get to design, and as well as trying to make sure from a safety perspective, buses can make that turn there.
Mr. Peterson, you had a question?
Yes, I got a question, Keith Peterson. That property has a huge dip in it. During the development phase, are you guys gonna build that up to street level or a little above the street level for runoff?
We're gonna look at that from a civil engineering perspective. Our goal would be to build it up. We have to put a detention pond on-site, so there will be some grade to it to allow that runoff to the detention pond area itself. But we will build it up based on a civil engineering design.
Now, the twenty-nine townhomes, is that gonna, is that gonna be... The backside of that is gonna be towards twenty-nine or the front side of it's gonna be the Bothwell Street?
You, and I failed to bring the presentation, so that's on me. But we have a combination of both. Bothwell will have front-facing units, where with the rear-low garage, the units in the backside will have more front-low garage feature component to it. And then we have a set that's on the plan east side. Those also have front-low garages. But the assets facing Bothwell will be rear-low garages, so you won't be able to pull in from the street there.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody-
I have, I have some questions. I'm, and I'm just gonna kind of put this out there for you to think about. You've got now and you've got some time later on as well. I'm typically reticent to zone a pud.
Yep.
That's not near an activity center. You know, like if you were down at one side of the street, that would be one thing, but you're down at the opposite side of the street. There are a variety of multifamily housing zonings that are available. Some of them, unit-wise, would meet what you're looking to do right now. R M twenty-six being one of them, because it looks like you're trying to do about twenty units per acre. There are very established development standards for R M twenty-six. I'm being asked to look at something very cookie cutter for P U D on one point six nine eight acres. I just want you to be able to understand where my mind is at right now and let you kind of address it. And it could be now or it could be in the middle of time, but I'd just kind of like to hear your thoughts around here.
Yeah, so-
Where your journey is going.
Yeah, so Commissioner Engel, full transparency, that was just laziness, right? We, when we first came in with the seventy-two units, we needed the pud to get the amount of density we have there. But once we quickly realized that we could not, that that was not the best fit for the community, I did have a conversation with Lucas and the planning, Luke and the planning commission and said, hey, if we change routes, we have to start all over again. He said, yes. I said, well, why don't we just stick to the cores and try to layer in as much as the multifamily requirements and conditions within it, and as well as trying to build. And I think we're gonna be beholden, because they're townhomes, we will be beholden to multifamily building conditions there. The thing we gained really from a pud perspective is our ability to kind of push our setbacks closer to the property line, which allows more flexibility interior for flow of traffic.
I'm aware. That's some of my concern, actually.
Yeah.
With regards to your neighbors, right? I mean, and this, this is, there are some things I would delve to be a gentle increase in density, and this would be a little bit more than gentle. And so typically, when I, when I look at something like that, I like to think of good neighbors, buffers, things like that. And I'm not seeing that condition in the application. So I'm just gonna, I'm good, you've answered my question, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Has there been outreach to the two neighbors that would-
Yes, ma'am.
Close to your property line?
Yes, ma'am, we've had multiple community meetings they've been invited to.
They attended one?
Not to my knowledge. We have, we've had very few attendants from the Bothwell Street neighbors. The last meeting, I think we had maybe two or three that came. But we've had adjacent street neighbors that have attended the meetings. But we haven't had much success in the Bothwell Street neighbors coming. I know Sid Evans did go speak to some of the community members while they, they didn't come to the meeting. He went and reached out to them directly.
And so the property owners like at thirteen twenty-one, which is right next to it, have you been in touch with them at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And the meetings that you had, the outreach meetings that you had, how many people attended?
Typically, anywhere between ten, twenty in a meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we still have six minutes and twenty-seven seconds remaining. If you had further comments or if there was anybody else that wanted to speak in favor of the application, you could come to the podium, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else that wants to speak in favor, we have up to ten minutes available for anyone in opposition. And if there's more than one speaker, if you'd line up over here by the podium and then present your name and address and your comments, please. So if there's anyone else in opposition, if you wanted to get in line, that would be appreciated.
William Sidney Evans, nineteen eighteen Bell Crest Drive, two seven four zero six. We do stand in opposition. The first thing we want to know, or we try to focus on, is the safety of our community. That's our number one goal. And at thirteen twenty-two, you have a no parking zone right in front of this property. I mean, all the way from one side to the other, there's no parking. And when there's a vehicle right there at the bottom side of Bothwell and South Side, there is, the bus cannot make that turn to continue the route. We've tested that with the help of Councilwoman Sharon Hattow and Director of Transit, Mr. Mason. And we have spoken to, actually, it was the people who live right beside that property. One of my good friends, Buddy Hayth. What that's gonna do is push the parking out on the other side of the property line, which is gonna make parking for that unit, because he didn't have enough parking in that complex for the park, you know, the parking issue. So it's gonna push it out in front of the houses of the residents on Bothwell. That was a big concern. So my guy, my buddy, he'll come out and see parking in front of his house. You know, whether it's once a month or every day or every week, that's a big concern. And the width of the street versus the bus and cars parked on the side, it's just not there. The bus is gonna be nine feet. The cars are six and a half apiece. The, from curbside to curbside is twenty-eight feet. So a bus driver, when it makes that turn, is gonna have to navigate three feet on one side, three feet on the other, which a professional driver should be able to do that. Our biggest safety concern is the lady who lives at thirteen oh six Bothwell, who navigates to the bus stop and back home via a wheelchair. All this activity and service, people coming to the hospital, EMS, the linen truck, you know, it's a lot of activity. And this lady is navigating her way to the bus stop on the outside of those cars. So you put her there, you're dealing with like four, four and a half feet. That's a big concern. That changes everything. That's a game changer for not only Bothwell, but for the community of Bimbo Park and the surrounding communities. So with that being said, we stand in opposition in Bimbo Park and our surrounding communities. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak in opposition? We have up to seven minutes and twelve seconds remaining. Seeing no other opposition, we do have rebuttal time for each side. So we have up to five minutes for the applicant, if you would like to make any additional comments of rebuttal. You have another question for the applicant?
Yes, for the applicant.
Could the applicant please come back to the podium? If you wouldn't mind repeating your name and address.
Sure. Joseph Rogers, one four zero five one Over Million Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You made mention about parking. Will that be, how is that parking worked in? Is it gonna be parking for each unit on the property?
Yes, sir. Each unit comes with a one-car garage and a driveway to park their vehicle. What I stated earlier was, what we're looking at now, based on the last community meeting, is a redesign of how we can provide additional parking on-site. Because again, we heard, I heard that the last meeting, that parking was a major concern. So we want to be very intentional about maximizing parking on-site. The challenge, while we originally laid it out the way we have it, one, was to meet code standard. I want to meet that, too. And then two, obviously trying to not create a, just a big old parking lot with no trees or anything like that, becomes very just utilitarian kind of space. So we're trying to create something that was very natural and organic and fit the area. But after hearing the community about their concern about parking, we're now looking at how can we maximize additional parking. So we're gonna address the individual tenant's parking needs based on their one-car garage and their driveway. But now we're also looking at maximizing additional spaces for their visitors to keep traffic off of Bothwell.
So there'd be public parking on the property for visitors?
Yes, sir.
And where would that, you know? I'm trying to picture, visualize this in my head, you know?
Nothing was submitted to staff, a picture of what you're planning to do or anything like that? That wasn't?
I can, I have it. I can send it quickly to Lucas if he wants to pull it up.
I'd like to see the U D P again. Do we have one for this? Could we see that again with the turnaround for the buses?
We can. I mean, I will say the U D P is gonna be more of a dimensional change than other things. It wouldn't get to the site-specific discussion that this is talking about. And I do want to kind of caution the commission, we're not getting too far into site development issues as well. There's a broader question about impact into the broader community, which is fine, but just want to be careful about how we're talking about the actual site plan here.
The site plan is a representation, not a requirement.
And I will note also, the ordinance requirements, minimum requirements is two-point-one space per townhome unit. So that's the minimum that the city requires for parking.
Mr. Kirkman, I, since we're waiting for a minute, there is a question that I'd like, you might need some time to do this, but I'd like you to answer for me. Based on the U D P, okay, versus, let's call it, R M twenty-six, could you tell me what the distance would be to the development?
Basically, the buffer.
Yeah, the required buffer.
So about the buffers between the residential or from the street?
From the residential.
Okay. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Mr. Downing wants both. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, please. Yes, please. So I will say, uh, between single-family residential and townhome type of developed multifamily would be a type C planting yard is normally required. That's an average fifteen-foot width planting yard. Street yards typically gonna be ten feet on there. I think that's the broader range you're trying to get to.
Yeah.
Ten feet?
So, uh, the ordinance generally would require, if you have single-family residential adjacent to multifamily residential, a type C buffer, which is an average fifteen-foot width buffer. And then a street yard would typically be a ten-foot width.
And, and the, the other question I've got here with regards to the UDP, um, what type of buffer would be required between this and single-family residential?
What was the last part? I'm sorry.
What type of buffer would be required?
So the Unified Development Plan and the PUD allows you to have basically maximum flexibility on what this requires to be.
Okay, that's all I, you know?
So this is a site plan proposal, correct?
This was our, uh, original site plan that's gonna change. We, this is what we call our fit study to see how we, what our, what our density would look like once we put it on the site. Um, obviously, uh, one thing that, that we will have to fall into is what, what we, we just discussed here, uh, what the actual zoning requirements would be and the interpretation of zoning, particularly how we access the site. Um, make sure we have enough width for fire trucks, turnaround, et cetera. And I wanna make it clear, this is not the scale. This is just a, a rendering of, hey, here's, here's a potential layout of it. Uh, one thing that we, we have, I think you brought up at the last, uh, meeting, was that we may have to create a second entry, which will put us at, uh, I think the far right, I'm assuming, uh, where it says view one and two, uh, that far right, we may have add a second entry there as well for easier flow of traffic in and out. But back to the parking question, that, that middle space where you see that triangle green area, yeah, the triangle green area, that's where we have planned to, uh, to put some, to like plant in, make more greenery. But we do have an opportunity to not just reorient some of these units to gain additional parking as well, uh, on there. So what you're seeing here is just a representation of what we consider code minimum requirements, not necessarily what, what will ultimately be built and put there. But we, we do wanted to make sure that we had a starting point and forgot, and understand what the requirements from the community would be as we got into design. Um, and I do wanna make it clear, I've, I've said from the beginning, uh, when I started this project, when I first met with the community in January, that my intention is not to do this project without them being part of the design process, to understand it, to see it, to, 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 to hear from, I think Sharon Graber, who's a, uh, part of the community, is an architect, um, has, had her not good relationship. And we talked about, hey, what do we need to do here, getting feedback, et cetera. So right now, to answer your question more, more correctly, Commissioner Peterson, our goal would be to leverage that interior space to add additional parking, to keep it off-street.
Any other questions, Ms. Gaines? I think when I got out my magnifying glass, looking at that UDP, there was space dedicated for turnaround.
Yes.
Uh, I don't see that, and I realize this is an abbreviated shot, but I don't see where that would be on this, what we're looking at in front of us in terms of a sketch plan.
And turnaround in terms of, I'm sorry, in terms of what exactly?
It was a turnaround listed on the UDP for buses.
Oh, we, we wouldn't turn the bus around on site. The bus would turn around, uh, we wouldn't have bus turnaround. We need to act, provide access for fire trucks turnaround on the property. This is, everything we're showing is everything that's on-site for us. So I mean, maybe I'm not hearing your question correctly, because that could be on me.
I, I thought on the UDP, at the very point of the triangle down at the end, there was an item listed with some hash marks that appeared to me to be a turnaround to help with the buses.
No, ma'am.
That, that's the billboard.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, well, there's a stream buffer down there. That's part of what we were trying to flag for you. I know you were talking about trying to find the small details there on that. So we're bringing it up a little bit bigger, so everybody can kinda see that. So that would be an area that would not be able to be developed into as part of what that conversation is. Um, I do kinda wanna caution again, I'll let the attorney speak if we need to, about getting so far into the site design questions. I think we need to bring this back up a little bit.
Yeah, and just to, to build off of what Mr. Kirkman said, I mean, again, um, the, the design that was shown earlier is obviously illustrative. There is much more that needs to be done in the process to get to those site-specific details. And we'll just echo what Mr. Kirkman said.
Thank you. Do you have any more rebuttal comments?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Thank you. We have four minutes and thirty seconds remaining of rebuttal time for anyone in favor. Uh, you can go ahead and get up, um, because we will now go to five minutes of rebuttal time for those who are in opposition. If you would give your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Jackson. I live at eighteen oh three Carlton Avenue, Greensboro, two seven four oh six. I'm on the backside of Kindred Hospital in Bimbo Park. The plan that was shown to us, um, Thursday a week ago, the schematic, only had available inside that com, the property complex, three extra parking spaces aside from the parking that was allocated to the people who own the townhomes. Uh, there was concern about the fire trucks being able to get in, into the backside of the property to maneuver around. It seems that each time the developer has come to talk to us, the plan changed, changed. And even tonight, as he was talking about a second driveway, that was something that was never, um, brought up to us. So things keep changing and changing and changing and changing. The other day, I went out to look at the concerns about the traffic and the buses. And I went out and I observed three different bus cycles for the number four bus, uh, watching it make that turn, um, looking at how much room it had to travel, uh, how much, how much space it had to travel. Uh, I also, I took photos, but I didn't bring them for this presentation. But while I was out there, the school bus also came from south, um, uh, south side and turned onto Bothwell going eastward. Uh, basically, there's not a lot of room on the side. When I took my photos, there was a car parked on the side where there is no restrictions for parking. So I was able to see the bus have to maneuver with a legitimately parked vehicle, uh, on that street. I also observed big linen trucks coming down, going towards the hospital because the entrance to the backside of Kindred Hospital is on, as you go down Bothwell, after you pass South Side. Uh, I also observed car after car with linen truck or car after car with FedEx truck, all traveling one behind the other, going in one direction. Uh, I was also able to see what would happen if two cars were coming oppositionally, as well as having that car parked. There is no room. Uh, at the last meeting, community meeting, Mr. Rogers mentioned that there was a homeowners association that should be dealing with the parking. But he basically said, uh, people are gonna park where they're gonna park. And there was nothing put into, nothing put forth as to possible solutions for dealing with people parking illegally once that facility or that property is developed. It's not the right fit for that location. Uh, he's mentioning a second, uh, access driveway entrance. Well, that second entrance can only go by or close to where the billboards are, and that's a flood zone. South, uh, the creek that flows through, um, Bimbo Park flows along South Side Boulevard. And that creek at that point by the bu, uh, and, and you could see it from the photos that, uh, Mr. Lucas showed, uh, at the beginning of the presentation, where the two billboards are and all that growth, that's a flood train, the flood plain. And the creek runs underneath that through, under the highway, and then comes out on the backside. You've got Highway twenty-nine, Interstate forty, Interstate eighty-five. All of that is merging right there at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. We have fifty-four seconds remaining. If you'd give your name and address again, please.
My name is Kevin Truitt, nineteen twenty-two Drexmore. Um, the thing people are focused on, the turnaround and so forth, but the most important thing is the unintended potential consequence. It's a very narrow street with only, as previously mentioned, twenty-eight feet from curb to curb. You have two cars parked on either side. And if you have a fire truck going in one direction, the bus going in the other, they can't navigate once they get so far down the street. The bus would have to back up, and it's my understanding, they have to get permission to back up. The fire truck has to do what it has to do. They might have to back up. If for, for any reason, you had an accident, a car breakdown or something, and you have an emergency, the emergency vehicle has no way to get out other than trying to back up. And the same would apply to the bus as well. So it's the narrowness of the street. Sorry.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing, and we'll be looking for a motion on the zoning. Um, do you have a further question or comment? I'm sorry.
I, I just have a comment. So I, I do know I, um, thank you, Ms. Jackson, for being here tonight. I spoke with her back in June. But, uh, I guess my bigger concern besides parking is will this benefit the greater community? And, um, I know there are some historic aspects of that district, Bimbo Park. Uh, I, I, I give deference to history and all of those wonderful aspects. Uh, but this is a matter of affordable housing. It's also a matter of a bold vision for the community. And I know there are, you know, different opinions about the parking aspects of this, but I do see the greater aspect in this particular matter. Um, I do intend to support this on tonight primarily because what I heard tonight is a focus on parking and traffic. And I believe that those things can be mitigated. But I also see that the gentleman, Mr. Rogers, has talked with the community, uh, with the neighbors, and there's been some concessions after concession. So I do intend to support this on tonight because again, I, I see the bigger picture of what this can do for that particular area. I drove through that area recently and last month, and, and I know it has potential. I know it has growth. And I believe this is the segue to catapult that particular area, but also giving deference to history and those who lived there previously.
Any other comments?
I have a question for staff. It's been a lot of talk about the parking, and I'm just asking, does the, is the street, um, does it meet the code for Greensboro? Does the street meet the code for Greensboro?
I'll let Mr. Tipton answer that question.
If this street was built today, it is a collector's street by our classifications, which put a minimum of thirty-six feet on it. But as you redevelop property alongside of a collector's street, you would be, by our subdivision ordinance, you'd be required to widen your section of the street.
By how many feet?
Excuse me?
By how much?
It would be half of, it's half of the required width. So if it's twenty-eight feet, I don't wanna do math and bore everybody, but you'd have to build your half of the thirty-six-foot ultimate. So if it's twenty-eight and you got an eight-foot difference, you're four more feet, basically.
I too will be supporting it. I think it'd be great for the neighborhood. Uh, that building, it was a building that it burned down. It was a nursing home at one time, and, uh, it didn't look too pretty going down twenty-nine South. So I will be supporting it also. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm, Mr. Rogers, I think that you have a, a very wonderful entrepreneurial vision. I wish it was someplace else, um, or that you had a different buffer that I could look at. And for me tonight, I, I have consistently opposed, um, PUDs that are not near activity centers. And so I'll be consistent in my opposition to that this evening. Uh, for me, there are established standards for residential multifamily, which is what you're building, is multifamily, that I think should be adhered to. Um, and the fact that we're going with something that allows us to maximize the space within an established neighborhood, not, you know, not near where the commercial side of it is, um, to me, makes it extremely difficult for me to deviate from that, uh, that feeling. So I will be opposing it this evening, but I do wish you the best. I, I, we need people investing in housing in the community, as Commissioner Downing and Commissioner Gilmer have stated.
Ms. Gaines? I agree with Mr. Engel. I, I cannot support it. We have gone from seventy-two units to forty-two units, and now we're down to thirty-four units. And I know we've been cautioned about we're not designing this site. However, I, I don't think we've got enough details. And the putt is just too wide open for one point six nine eight acres of land. It is so tiny. And, and you're trying to get a whole lot of stuff in one little bitty piece of property. Uh, and, and I, I, I don't, I don't think it works for this location. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting it. Anyone else?
Um, I'd just like to say that I, I won't be supporting this as well. It, you know, um, it constitutes, thank you, Commissioner Engel, the, uh, RM twenty-six, which is a density in a neighborhood like this, which recently we, we have voted against in other locations in the city. So I'll be voting against this. And I think the putt is a little, as I, I agree with what you're saying.
No one else has a comment? We'll entertain a motion and see which way we're going with it.
Commissioner Keith Peterson, pertaining to item Z twenty-four dash zero six dash zero zero three. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its actions to recommend denial of the rezoning request for property at thirteen twenty-two Bothwell Street from CD dash RM dash eight condition residential residential multifamily eight to PUD plan unit development to be consistent, inconsistent with the adopted GSO comprehensive plan and considers that the action taken to be reasonable and in the public's interest for the following reasons. The request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed PUD zoning district, even as condition, does not limit negative impacts on the adjacent properties, nor does it permit uses that fit the context of surrounding area. The request is not reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will be detrimental to the neighbors and surrounding community, and denial is in the public's interest.
Second.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Peterson, and who was the second? Mr. Engel. So to vote in favor of the motion is to vote for denial. And I think we might wanna have hand raises as well as voice. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay and raising your hand.
Nay.
We have three.
Nay, yeah.
So, um, there's no need then for us to vote on the UDP, is there?
No, if the commission feels like this is, the zoning is not to be approved, then I think it's, can be inferred that the UDP goes along with that discussion.
Okay. So this zoning denial constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. All zoning appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four City Council Meeting. Thank you. Normally, we take a break between seven and seven-thirty. I think if we start our next item, we'd be mid-item when it was time for us to take a required break. So we might want to stop now. It's just about seven o'clock. And take a fifteen-minute break, please. It's just about seven o'clock and take a 15-minute break, please.
When is chaos a good thing? When it's women's professional basketball and Greensboro is home to a women's professional basketball team, the Chaos. Chitrina Smalls is the founder, owner, and head coach of the Greensboro Chaos. All right, tell me your story. I know you played ball as a little girl, like lots of sports though, right?
Yes, yes, yes. I played a lot of sports. I started playing basketball around 10 and, uh, I just fell in love with the sport and knew it was something that had to be a part of my life for the rest of my life.
So you played ball in college, but then you got hurt?
Yes. Um, I had a shoulder injury and because of the shoulder injury, that kind of messed up my playing career and, uh, around 22 years old, I picked a coaching.
Yeah. So, and actually you said a coach actually saw the coaching ability in you before you had any idea that would be your path?
Yes. Uh, my head coach, Rodney Copeland, rest in peace, he, uh, used to tell me, you see the game much differently than regular basketball players and you're going to be a much better coach one day than you are a basketball player. So he's seen something in me before I even knew it existed.
Fast forward, you're here in Greensboro, working for the city and, um, some friends say, you know, you should think about bringing professional women's basketball to Greensboro. And you thought?
Um, you all are crazy. How am I going to start it? Because I don't have any money. Right? Um, but they, they persisted and, um, they continually asked me and I seen that they wanted it and I knew that I can, I can do it. So I, I took a leap of faith and started a team.
You started in 2019 and how did you do that?
So I had to establish a name and work up a logo and then, um, Amber Cook, who's one of our players and captains, she's from Greensboro. So she has a lot of connection with different women players and she began to reach out to different people. I began to reach out to other resources.
2019, you got the team together, you got all this funding, you started and then you couldn't even play a single game because of the pandemic.
It was a big surprise, but it, it, it gave us the opportunity to integrate ourselves into the community. It gave us the opportunity to give back, uh, with the Twain Coach Drive, donations to the IRC and, um, just really get our footing before we jumped out there and had our first season.
You did get to have a, a first season a year later and actually get on the court. What was the community response to seeing the team and, and these, and these athletes, these, these female athletes?
The community response was much greater than what I thought. I, I thought maybe we'll have like 10 fans in the stands, um, but people showed up. We had season pass holders, our first year out, never even seen, seen the ladies play, but, um, we had people who just like supported us off of blind faith and we had a great turnout our first season and ever since then, some of the fan base has followed us since then for the last three seasons and it's, it's much bigger than what I've ever really thought that we would have.
Explain what it means to have a women's professional sports team in Greensboro, this size city.
It's beyond what I could imagine or even words that I can think of just because I never thought I would be in this position. So it's much greater than my wildest dream, right? Um, and then to do it in a city that I'm not necessarily from, I'm, I'm from New York and New Jersey and to be able to come down here and fall in love with the city of Greensboro and say, this is where I want to plant roots and, uh, this is where the Chaos is going to plant roots at. It's, it's much bigger than what I ever would have thought.
This is really bigger than basketball for you?
It is. Our saying with the team is more than basketball. So we have a charitable branch called Chaos Cares. It's about giving back, making sure that our players have a home. It's about making sure the young ladies who come to the games and, uh, watch us play know that they can do it. Internship opportunities, coaching opportunities, opportunities behind the scenes. We, we like to just give back.
Young fans, little girls who are watching the team, what, what do you want them to get out of this?
I want them to get that anything is possible. I tell my players, um, on the court, you could be as fierce as you want to be, uh, because that's going to translate to your life, right? So I, I feel like what we do on the court translate to the office and, uh, into our families, like, cause one day as a woman, right? We're going to have to negotiate a salary and we're not going to be able to just hold back on that, right? Because we're women, we know what that feels like. So I want them to take the same passion into their workspace, into their homes, into their families and, um, do what they do best, right? Don't like, don't stifle your voice here on the court. Don't stifle your voice in real life. I want the young ladies to see that you could be fierce, you still could be a lady, you could still play ball, you still could be tough, tumble, it, all of those things. I want them to walk away feeling like ladies come in all different shapes, sizes and, uh, attitudes, right? And, and walk in it, be confident in it.
All right, you might normally see her on the court. This is Analza Jordan Tweet, as you probably know, our shooting guard. Hello?
How are you today?
So good. Okay. What made you come to the Chaos? What, what interested you in it?
Just hearing so much about how she loves like women empowerment and just wanting to give things back to the community, especially when it comes to younger females. So after getting invited out, I did my own research on the, you know, history of the team and just what her passion is about and it kind of touched me and what I'm about as well. And I got invited to try out, um, I just seen it as a great opportunity and I'm so grateful that I made the team and just proud to put on for my city.
What do you like about this team?
Um, the energy is so, it's so loving, you know, everybody's just welcoming and of course the wins, you know, were, were all pretty great. This is a really great family. I just came into this family not too long ago, but they embraced me with such great arms. It, it feels amazing.
And it's got to be fun.
It is definitely fun and growing, it's a great time.
And seeing the fans and, and the little girls, we keep talking about these other girls who are, who are looking at you as role models. What's that like?
It's great. When we were growing up, there wasn't too many, you know, it was a lot of older guys that helped us get there. But now that we're older and we see younger girls more and more wanting to play basketball, it really warms my heart, you know, and the fact that I'm able to be there and help them on that journey, it just means so much more.
Danny White is a shooting guard for the Chaos. What brought you to the Chaos?
Um, honestly, my coach, she found me in the midst of playing at this league at Barber Park and I honestly didn't even know about the Chaos until she came up and she approached me asking if I played and I was just like, okay, sure. So she asked me to come out for tryouts. I wasn't able to make it unfortunately due to being out of town. And then she reached out to me via social media, asking if I was still interested and when I got the message, I was like, yeah, like I'm down.
Did you think you would have an opportunity to play professional basketball?
I honestly did not. I had offers to play in college, but I didn't take them due to, you know, they just didn't have the major I wanted at the schools. So after that, I was just like, well, you know, maybe it's over for me. And so when coach found me, we were just like, wow, like guys still work in mysterious ways.
So what is it like to be on the court with these strong professional women who are at the top of their game?
I love it, like every bit of it. I love the environment. I love being around women who are trying to better you while they're bettering themselves. Like I feel like that's, that's what makes sports better. Like when you're around people who are passionate about what they're doing and then they're trying to push you to be a better version of yourself too, so.
What's your dream?
My dream honestly is just to be a successful black woman. Like whether I'm doing something I love, whether I'm helping people, it's just to be successful all around.
And are you doing what you love right now?
Yes, I am. Like I love playing basketball, I model on the side and I love both of them, so.
Want to find out more, try out for the team or go to a game, go to greensborocaos.com.
Litter has become an eyesore in Greensboro. Let's take pride in our city and do our part to keep our roads and streams litter-free. Keep the green clean. The city of Greensboro takes pride in the host of reinvestment activity taking shape in East Greensboro. Equitable investment on the east side has been an ongoing effort to enhance the quality of life for our residents, students, and visitors. A hub of recreation is evidenced through the downtown Greenway, which touches all walks in different ways. Construction continues on the final mile of this one-of-a-kind four-mile Greenway. The western branch winding from Smith Street to Spring Garden Street is expected to be open in the summer of 2025. The walking and biking Greenway connects at least a dozen neighborhoods, including Old Ashboro, South Side, Douglas Park, and the Dunleith Neighborhood, all on the east side. There are more than $600 million in planned and completed projects along the downtown Greenway. This urban loop enhances quality of life with a variety of fitness classes, community walks, and an emphasis on public art, cementing Greensboro's reputation as a creative city. With the connections to the existing and planned trails in the city and the county, this loop is the center of the entire system and will one day connect us from all parts of the community and beyond. A future East Greensboro Greenway will connect the J. Douglas Galleon Depot in downtown to Barber Park. In collaboration with the city, NC DOT is developing a feasibility study for the route of the East Greensboro Greenway. The first phase of the Randleman Road corridor enhanced transportation services and encouraged additional reinvestment on the east side. The city will work with a consulting firm to assist with drafting a plan for the southeast area, which spans approximately eight square miles. Recommendations based on significant public input will guide the future growth and development necessary to improve services and connectivity for a variety of established neighborhoods in the southeast area. The city is investing $3 million of American Rescue Plan funding to revitalize our oldest golf property with prominent ties to the civil rights movement. The Gillespie Golf Course Master Plan relies on the facility's historical and cultural relevance as a guide for future improvements. Additionally, we applaud the PGA Reach Foundation for awarding a $250,000 grant to commission a mural of the Greensboro Six. These courageous men integrated the Gillespie Golf Course in 1955. The city is taking a new approach to meet the needs of the East Greensboro community in a way that has never been done before. Greensboro Public Libraries and Parks and Recreation have set out to create a centralized community hub, the Windsor-Chavis Noco Community Complex. Thanks to the advocacy of Congresswoman Kathy Manning, the city was awarded a $4.3 million grant from the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Program. This supports several much-needed improvements to Noco Park, which aligns with plans for the $65 million Windsor-Chavis Noco Community Complex. The community-approved design will integrate the existing Windsor Recreation Center, Vance-Chavis Library, and Noco Park. In collaboration with Guilford County, the 65,000-square-foot facility will incorporate public health, social services, and cooperative extension. It won't be long before the shovels begin turning the dirt on the first phase of construction.
After years of working in restaurants for other people, a husband and wife team decided it was time to take their love of food on the road.
My family business in Mexico has been always involved with food. So as a kid, I remember helping my mom, uh, with the family business, uh, peeling up corn to, to sell corn on the, on the circuses and all the way until I moved to the United States. My first job was, uh, on, on a Mexican restaurant. So it's, it's been my whole life pretty much.
Well, mine is just with my grandma, you know, her delicious cooking and, um, I didn't really have the, the business experience, uh, until I got here to this country. Um, I started serving tables, um, at the restaurant where we met actually and, um, you know, that, I, I did not know, especially because I'm not Mexican. So I had to learn the food, Mex- Mexican food and, and all that, but I loved it. And I mean, it's been 20 years since then and yeah.
Here we are. Uh, she came to the restaurant that I managed back then when we met and after a couple visits from her mom and, and herself at the restaurant, uh, we talked and I offered a job as a waitress. So that's where we got.
He didn't need a waitress back then, but he offered me a job anyway.
I've been on the Mexican restaurant scene for 20, 20 years or so. Uh, I knew I wanted to do something for a while and not, I did not want it to be working for the restaurant industry all my life. So a restaurant, it was, uh, it was hard to picture because of the money that needs to be invested on a restaurant. So when we saw the food trucks, um, getting alive in town, we said, okay, we, probably we can afford something small and that's, we had an opportunity to get us a small trailer and that's how we started when, on the food truck business. When I, when we started the, the business, it was my, my best friend, which is my, my, my brother, Alex, and myself, we, that's, that's, we started the, the two of us and right before COVID. So since everybody calls like brothers, we said, we didn't have much time to think about the name, so we said, hey, let's just call it Taco Bros.
Taco and Bro.
And we've always been fan of Nintendo and Mario Bros. So that was something, a little bit of that involved on the name too. Our food comes from, uh, is similar as, as downtown Mexico City. I mean, we serve our tacos that, that we serve is the same way that you're going to eat them in downtown Mexico City. Uh, we, we don't do anything different in, or fancy. We just stick to what we know people liked and what we know how to do best. And that's basically our menu comes from Mexico City. Cuernavaca, that's my hometown in Mexico. So we, we try to serve as authentic as, as region as we can. Well, the most popular are tacos. We, we serve tacos more than anything on our menu, but my favorite is called alambre, which is a combination of, uh, chicken and chorizo and we can also make steak and chorizo and it's served with cooked onions, avocado slices, a roasted jalapeno, corn tortillas on the side, and obviously our hot sauce is always present in, in our meals. So that's my, I will say alambre is my favorite meal.
I love tacos. Um, you know, marrying a Mexican is just like tacos, your first, well, I mean, your second love. I love it because you, you get to try different meat. You don't have to just eat all chicken, all beef, you know, or steak. Um, you can mix and match. Um, I also like the quesadilla, cause I'm a cheese lover, so that comes with cheese. So those are my two favorites. I, I, this guy is a hard worker. Um, everything started during COVID, you know, he, uh, he stopped working somewhere else where he was because of COVID going on and it was just me working and this guy said, okay, we have to do something. People have to eat. So we started bringing our trailer, uh, it was a small trailer how we started and he, he started calling and emailing and just asking neighborhoods and people just to let us bring our tra- uh, our little trailer to, to serve our food. And that's how we started and he was very pushy. He, he didn't give up.
Recording in progress.
You know, I love it that he was.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is item Z 2408010, a rezoning request from LI Light Industrial to CM Commercial Medium for the property located, uh, excuse me, for the property identified as a portion of 2645 Randleman Road, generally described as east of Randleman Road and north of Corliss Street, point four five. of Corliss Street, .45 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, and I do want to point out that the majority of the subject property is already zoned straight commercial medium. The back, approximate third of the property is light industrial, and so the request is to rezone the back third of the property to commercial medium. In looking at the zoning map, you can see that north and east of the request are zoned light industrial. South of the request is conditional district light industrial and commercial medium, and west of the request is commercial medium. This is the aerial photo of the subject property, and it currently contains a roofing contractor's office. North of the request contains a dental office. East of the request contains wholesale trade. South of the request contains an automotive service use and another wholesale trade use. West of the request contains a tattoo parlor and an outdoor storage use. This is the subject property as seen from Randleman Road. This is an image of the dental office located north of the request, zoned LI. This is the wholesale use located north of the request, and east of the request, sorry, east of the request on Green Gate Drive, zoned LI. This is the industrial gas wholesale use located south of the request on Corliss Street, zoned conditional district light industrial. And this image shows the auto service use located south of the request, zoned commercial medium. And this is the tattoo parlor located west of the request on Randleman Road, zoned commercial medium. And this is the outdoor storage use that's located commercial medium and conditional district commercial medium. This view is facing north on Randleman Road. The subject property is on the right. This view is facing south on Randleman Road. The subject property is on the left. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the Conference of Plans' Future Built For map currently designates this property as urban general and within an urban mixed-use corridor and the Randleman Road reinvestment corridor. The GSO 2040 Conference of Plans' Future Land Use Map designates this property as commercial. The proposed rezoning request supports the Conference of Plans' growing economic competitiveness big idea to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed, and the Conference of Plans' filling in our framework strategy to encourage higher-density, mixed-use, walkable infill development. The proposed commercial medium zoning district is intended to accommodate a wide range of retail, service, office, and multifamily residential uses in a mixed-use environment. The proposed uses are compatible with the existing uses on adjacent tracks, and the proposed zoning request is appropriate given the property's location along a major thoroughfare. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? No questions. And the applicant has up to 10 minutes, and anyone else who wants to accompany them in support of the application. If you'd like to come to the microphone and identify yourself, please. The applicant not present. Excuse me. Yeah, could you come to the podium, please? We're done with the abbreviated agenda, so this is usually when you have up to 10 minutes to make your case about why this is appropriate. But if you'd give your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Cameron Dozier. You want my home address or business address? It doesn't matter.
Either.
Either. 143 North Main Street in Kernsville, North Carolina. And I'm here representing O'Brien Architecture, which is representing the client, Cipriano Jose, I believe that's his name, and his family. And so he owns this property as well as the adjacent mechanic shop or auto shop right next to it. So half the building, I'll give you the real reason for this request. So obviously, he doesn't have any need for the light industrial, but the business that is on that property will stay as a business use. But he wants to use the additional parking on that lot for an event center that's gonna go in half of the building for the auto shop. So, and that's really all he's gonna do. And then we talked with the city, and they said that, you know, we shouldn't have to do any traffic impact studies or anything like that, and that's really the main reason for the rezoning. So, because they wouldn't allow us to do the shared parking on the light industrial parcel. So.
So this is shared with another site?
It is planned to be, and I know there's obviously, I think, an additional process to go through that as well. Now, regardless of whether that gets approved or not, again, it doesn't serve the client to have half of his parcel zoned LI when he's not using it for light industrial, so. So regardless of whether it gets approved or not, I think this is favorable to the client to have a full CM zoned property here, so.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Did you have any other comments that you wanted to make?
No other comments.
Did any of the commissioners have questions? Okay, we have nine minutes and two seconds remaining for anyone that wants to speak in favor of the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have up to 10 minutes available for anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the application. Somebody had signed up to speak in opposition. We know you, but if you'd give your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am Sharon Hightower. I reside at Six Bells Court, Greensboro, NC 27401. I think I'm standing here because I'm very disturbed about what I just heard. There's a lot of work going on on Randleman Road to make improvements, to make the area better. And we are planning to, working with our, with the community. I've sat in meetings with our community and talked to all of them. I live in East Greensboro and Southeast Greensboro as well. I think we are trying to get the best bang for our area now that we can to enhance and improve. And so to hear certain things like this, I just wonder, has there been any kind of community engagement? Last week, there was three meetings I know along around the Randleman Road corridor. One of them was held at Triathem and Science Academy. So we're trying to make sure we're engaging everyone, businesses, residents, because that's a major corridor into the city of Greensboro. And we think it deserves better treatment than it's gotten in the past, is undisturbed, overlooked, neglected. And so it's efforts all out to make sure those things change significantly. And so just a little disturbed by the things I hear tonight around this particular property, just even though it's around a commercial kind of corridor area, but it's light industrial, it's commercial, it's kind of a mixed-use thing. And so I'm, as a citizen, I'm just concerned that as we continue riding up and down Randleman Road, we're getting a lot of negative businesses, and maybe this one isn't one, but I'm not sure how it would be classified. And I think that our community deserves certainly a lot more, a lot better. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Could you come to the podium, please? Seeing none, we do have five minutes for each side for rebuttal time if there's anything that the applicant wants to add. If you'd come back to the podium, please.
Yes, so I would just like to say, I mean, you know, I'm here to represent the client, so I only know him as my client. And I will say, he's been operating this auto shop in the community for who knows how long, him and his family. So I think he is one of the community. And, you know, we, our goal wasn't to upset the community. We tried to reach out to the community, you know, going through this process. It wasn't very clear on whether we needed to do a community meeting in person or if we could send out mailers, right? So essentially, what we did was, we just created a document. We got the mailing list for everybody, created a document, sending them to the development ordinance, showing them the plans that we have, doing online surveys where you can give back any feedback that you may have on this rezoning. And we sent those out. Now, we honestly should have done a little bit earlier, but I think we had a little bit of back and forth with the city on whether we were gonna make it for this agenda meeting, right? So we wanted to get it out there and make sure everybody was aware. So we didn't have our community meeting like we wanted to, just because, I guess, again, it got pushed back through, bouncing back and forth to the city. But I do think that the owner wants this for the community, right? He wants to have event centers for people of any community, right, to come use the space in the local community. And I personally think it would be something good for the community versus, you know, anything else that could be there. But, but yeah, that's really all I have to say regarding that, so.
And I'll just look for the commission. Mr. Sharp did provide his summary on neighborhood communications. It's in your package if you want to reference that.
Yes. So, Mrs. Stevens?
All right, I'm gonna try to put this together from what we have in our packet and what was in the letter that was mailed out.
Okay.
The owner of the 2645 property also owns Next Door 2649.
Correct.
And at 2649, it's a auto mechanic shop.
Yes.
But he's planning on turning the back portion of that building into an event center.
So currently, about, it's about, he's using about half the building, so I think he's utilizing the back portion. So the side that would be the event center would be the front portion of the building. And obviously, I think he'll be freshening that up and giving it a nice look for the roadside there as well, so.
So the front part of 2649 Randleman Road that is already zoned correctly, and it's not part of tonight's presentation?
Correct.
Will be an event center.
Half the building would be an event center, half the building would be all the stuff.
And in order for that event center to operate, they need additional parking.
Correct.
And additional parking needs to be in a CM zoning rather than LI as it's currently zoned.
From my understanding, after a meeting with the city, this is the understanding we're changing.
I'm getting knocked from state.
Yes, that is correct. The parking associated with the use needs to have the same zoning, because special event centers are not allowed in the LI zoning district. So the parking that's associated with this use needs to be the same zoning as that use.
Can I ask a friendly question?
Sure.
I've not seen many split parcels before with zoning. Can you, can you tell me how that one happened?
I honestly cannot. There could be a variety of reasons. It could have been that property, the way it was configured, changed over time, and then the zoning just wasn't updated to follow that. It could be that there was zoning changes along the corridor that only went a certain distance. We've had that in some cases on there. Typically, that's related to annexation-related things, which would not be as much in this quarter. But no, I can't tell you the history of exactly how we ended up where we are. Staff, as a general rule, tries to discourage split zoning of properties for these types of reasons. Obviously, it's one of the reasons we're supporting this request, is to clean that up, to make sure that it's all, those kind of the supported, associated areas are of the same zoning as the main uses that are already zoned appropriately.
So this is a piece of property that currently has two different zonings, one in the front, one in the back.
Correct.
So the request tonight gets the zoning on the front partial the same as the zoning, the back portion will then become the same zoning as the front portion. So it is a zoning cleanup for starters, and it's a down zoning, going from LI to commercial medium.
Yes, so the first question, those districts are relatively equivalent to each other. I'm not sure down zoning is the right one, but they're close.
So we're cleaning up a little zoning issue, plus we're assisting the event center to have the additional parking that they need because it's the same owner.
Correct, correct.
And I'll also state that the parking at the mechanic shop, I don't know if they reworked it after, you know, with the proposal, this event center, that parking on that site will also be cleaned up for the auto shop because it's out of compliance. And then obviously, we'll be putting in additional landscaping and prettyening up 2645, the property we're rezoning, so.
Okay, I think I got it.
So for this zoning, we're just doing that, making it an M, so it's a complete M. You're just telling us that he's gonna use it for parking? And the event, the event center is in an existing zoning that does not apply to our decision-making here in terms of land use?
It does not. I mean, I thought it would be helpful for context, I mean, for what it's worth, but it's, I don't think it's really gonna affect your city.
I mean, that building exists, and they can do what they want with that building. Yes, thank you.
Let me ask you, what was the community feedback when you sent out, sent out the surveys?
I don't believe we've gotten any community feedback at this point. Again, I think we were a little late on that, so I don't know if we have got any responses yet at this point, which we were hoping to get some, but ultimately, we got them sent out Thursday, so we have from Thursday to today to get the feedback, right? So it was a little last notice, but...
The reason I'm asking is because Councilwoman brought up about Randleman Road, and I'll tell you that there is, I heard you say that the owner wanted an event center at that location. There is another event center directly one block over from this particular spot. So I don't know if the owner really told you the landscape and the makeup of Randleman Road and with the new foreseen projects coming in the near future. I would have loved to have you sit before the community and really hear their concerns. But if you sent the notices out late, I'm sure the post office don't do things in the speed issues.
So, so I guess that's where my mind is at. The letter doesn't, and I guess I should have caught this, there's no date on the letter, so I should assume that the date on the letter is last Thursday.
You can see the timestamp on the mailings from the post office from when we sent out everyone. Yeah, it might be hard to see.
My eyes are not exactly what they used to be. Okay. I see some on, I see one that says September 11th.
Yeah, and they, it was kind of an assembly line going, so I don't think the ink transfer on every one of those.
Just a question. Hearing concerns about, about the discussions, would it, would it hurt to go back and take 30 days and talk to the folks and see what kind of concerns that they have? Are you guys on a tight timeline?
Uh, well, you know, the client would, the owner would probably have a different story. However, I would love to continue to get feedback from the, from the neighbors. I mean, you know, we were hoping we would have some feedback to be able to share with you guys today, you know, even though it was...
That's kind of tight.
Yeah, it is, it is. But ultimately, I don't, I don't really feel like we're gonna go back to the community and get a bunch of reasons why we shouldn't do this. Because if, in my opinion, I know this is my opinion, I think this is only better in the community, and it's gonna make that section look much nicer, in my opinion. I mean, and maybe I'm a little biased because I know I'm working on the plans, and I know what it's gonna look like at the end, and what the city is gonna implement on us to put in place with some of these things.
Will that, will that improvements to that property, I guess you wouldn't know the answer to that, would it be better than what the city planned on doing on Randleman Road?
That's debatable.
I think the only, the only way we can frame the discussion right now is the special event facility use is allowed in the commercial medium zoning that is on both the front part of 2645 and all of 2649 Randleman Road. So I think the question is, in order to do the change of use, you have to have onsite parking, which can be done through that joint. The owner owns both pieces of property on there, so in order to do the change of use, done through that joint. The, the owner owns both pieces of property on there, so in order to make sure that the zoning, the parking associated with the use is in the appropriate zoning, that is the reason for the request this evening. But I guess the question is back to the applicant on whether or not they would be interested, agreeable to a 30-day continuance to the October meeting to get additional community input, because that's what I hear the commission asking the question.
Yes, and, and I want to add something as well. So, I just think it's unacceptable that it went out last Wednesday. I know, me personally, I hardly ever check my, my mail, like, maybe once a week. So, it definitely needs to go back so that the individuals in that area can receive the mail, um, and, and to have valuable input. Even if they have no input, you want to give them ample time to respond.
Right.
So, uh, to me, that's just, it's almost like saying, no outreach happened. Even though you had good intentions, it did not really happen. Um, the, the other component to this is the city has plans for Randallman Road or that, you know, corridor. So, I'm, I'm, I'm very mindful of thoughtfulness in regard to planning in this regard. Uh, I feel like it's just something that is on a whim. Now, that's my opinion, not the city's opinion, I'm just saying that. So, thoughtfulness in this particular matter is very important to us, to me, to me.
Uh, I'll address, for me, what is the elephant in the room, and that is, I realize that you did the outreach, and I think it was very helpful that you sent links to various types of information. But the common, um, process is one that it is sent a bit earlier, but in addition that you post a meeting, whether it's in person or online, so that people can come and express their points of view.
Right.
And do it as a community, rather than having individuals follow your survey link. That, that's an unusual approach. I'm not saying in the future it might not be the way things evolve.
Well, I agree.
But at the current time, the, the most common approach is to have a community meeting.
Okay.
All of that said, to me, we're looking at a corner of a piece of property that's zoned a different way. And to me, the logical thing to do is to make it all match. And so, that's what I'm weighing. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments or questions. Uh, we still have rebuttal time available. If not, then we will allow the opposition.
I, I, I guess where I diverge is that the use is permitted, but the construction is not. And I go back to what I talked about earlier, even with the PUD, with regards to, we have development standards, one way or another, that's what's happened here. And I have no idea, staff can't tell me, why it's zoned that way. And while I'm sympathetic, and probably if, you know, there had been some communication and everybody had talked, like, eh, okay. But I, I don't have that.
Right.
And I, I really value that. My six years here of tenure, I value that. I think it's just the way that we do things. It's, it's part of being neighborly.
Right.
Um, I'm not saying I'll vote against it, but I'm going to tell you that I take that into consideration when I vote on it.
Right.
So, I always give the option, and I'll, I'll make it to you right now. You could go back, take 30 days, come back, and have done the outreach. Eh, great. Or, we can hear it tonight. Up to you.
Um, well, that is a dilemma.
Madam Chair.
So, do I answer on behalf of myself, or in the best interest of my client? That's really the question I have to figure out.
Yep. Mr. Kilmer?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll ask the, uh, ci- the city attorney to respond to, to what's being said, please, about the 30 days coming from us.
Ultimately, sir, I mean, I think it's your choice whether or not, uh, you know, to, to agree to that continuance. Um, but it is, uh, boy, I can't tell you who you need to look out for, really, but I mean, if you're, if you're here representing the property owner, I think that's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
But again, it is up to you whether you, you wish to agree to that or not. We could proceed, uh, proceed to have the matter heard in full tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so I think, uh, in this case, I will move forward in the best interest of my client and have it heard tonight.
All right, thank you.
May I ask something? So, just-
Certainly, Mr. Downing.
Just as Mr. Ingalls said, um, you know, what he just mentioned, I'm not going to support it tonight either. I'm, I'm, I had to do a quick Google search. There was a Randallman Road corridor meeting September 10th and September 11th last week.
Okay.
Um, so I, I think it's in the best interest to do a continuance, but since you don't want to do so, I'm not going to support it tonight.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I, I have a question. This is Erica Glass for the attorney. Um, regarding, and I, I probably should know the answer, but regarding the required notice, um, does the statute require just first class by mail notice of the adjacent property owners?
I would have to check on the exact specifics, Commissioner Glass. Um, I do believe it refers to just registered mail, um, but.
Yeah, I, I think I need to take it one more, one step further. So, the requirements for notice are for the city's notice, and those have to be within 10 to 25 days of the hearing by first-class mail. There is nothing in our development ordinance that speaks to requirements of applicants and what they need to do with communications on there. Um, I will further note, this is a straight zoning request. What is, what information is in the ordinance speaks to if you have conditional zoning requests and there are residential uses within 750 feet, you must take the steps to tell the city how you communicate with those folks on there. That's the only thing in the ordinance. Now, obviously, it's to the discretion of the commission about other conversations on there. I just want to be clear about what, what the ordinance says relative to these communications.
So, essentially, it's a practice that the developer or applicant typically provides some type of notice to the adjacent landowners. I mean, it, it's a typical practice.
Yes, right. And we, we obviously encourage that when applicants come in, knowing that this is the desire generally of the, both the city council and the planning and zoning commission, and advise that this is, gives them, but we don't dictate how they do that, when they do that, those kind of things, or not things the city can require or speak to.
Commissioner Glass, yeah, just to echo a little bit of what Mike said, um, you've, you've identified the difference between an established practice and a statutory or ordinance mandated requirement, so.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll weigh in too. In doing the, the research on the plat- on the, the property itself, the LI zoning district did follow a former property line. So, the property lines were moved, uh, and zoning doesn't follow property lines. That zoning line is the zoning line, and the property line moves and doesn't change the zoning. So, so it does follow an old historic property line. That property line got moved, and the remnant LI is, is on the back of the property.
If, we can continue to deliberate, but I wanted to give the opportunity to the other side if they wanted to do any more rebuttal on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you have, I mean, you have some time if there's more you wanted to say.
Oh, I, you gotta let me. Um, no, I mean, I don't have anything else to say. I don't believe, um, I will say, you know, speaking to our last minute, you know, we did reach out to the city as well regarding some of the outreach and stuff like that. And literally, the day we mailed it out, or the day before we mailed it out, which is, this is the last week on Wednesday, we had the coalition reach out to us to ask us then what we've done as far as neighborhood community development. Now, you know, I would have wished we'd have got that email earlier too, but I think we were waiting, we had sent out an email to the city to ask, like, is there any help? You can get any guidance here? And then they connected us, you know, a few weeks later with some Greensboro Coalition people that represent the neighborhood community. And so, unfortunately, we didn't have time to even schedule a meeting with those, with them, because they reached out to us Wednesday. Thursday, we're mailing these out, and then we were planning to do a Zoom meeting with her Friday, but I don't, we just never got the opportunity. So, I just think this, um, you know, we had good intentions of doing all of these meetings, doing this in a timely manner, but I think there was so much back and forth with the city, the timeline just worked out the way it did. It wasn't anything malicious or trying to avoid any community in, uh, input or anything like that, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor at the rebuttal? Okay, then we have up to five minutes of rebuttal time for anyone in opposition. If you don't mind just repeating your name and address. Thank you.
Good afternoon, again, Sharon Hightower. I reside at Six Wheels Court, um, in the city of Greensboro. Um, I, I just really just can't emphasize enough how we're trying to improve that corridor. I understand if things need to get cleaned up in some regard, but we are saturated so much with auto and, and, and repair and car sales and all of that. And sure, people do need cars, and I thrive, and all of you do too. Not saying that, but what I'm saying is, we're asking for the way that, um, it's done to be a little bit more respectful in our community, how it looks. We want to change it. We are right there at Randallman Road where Toyota is literally 20 miles away. And so, we have now become the focus of our southeast Greensboro. Everybody wants to come in southeast Greensboro, where they didn't want to come at all before. You know, we were like the plague for one time. Now, we are the most wanted area in the city of Greensboro. But we need to make sure that it's done responsibly, respectfully, when we get development coming into the community. Whatever those changes may be, have to be respected, and the people that reside there, they're the ones that, you know, have to deal with it, and their quality of life is impacted, um, tremendously, when they have to deal with things that really don't benefit them. Entertainment spaces are great, you know, that's fine if you say it can be there, but what type of entertainment? We've seen problems with even some of that, um, if you will. So, I'm just saying that Randallman Road, who we know is now a focus of the city of Greensboro, as a, as a resident, when I go over there to the meat market or whatever, I, I like feeling safe, and I know it can be better, and we're all coming together as community to make sure it is better. And I think that has to be respected. So, I'm just, I'm just saying this to you tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition? If not, we can close the public hearing and see if there are any other comments from commissioners or questions. I have, I have a question of the staff. How is what we do tonight affected by the corridor plan that we'll consider next month?
Good evening. I'm Russ Glag. I work in the Planning Department and manage the long-range planning division. And we have been working on a corridor plan for Randallman Road over the past several months, almost going back to the beginning of last year. Um, that said, we don't have one adopted yet, so it's not an official city policy. Um, I will say it's clear from public meetings and from the information we gathered before that, that there needs to be a wider diversity of, um, uses along Randallman Road. We need to revitalize and modernize what is, you know, a 1970s, 1980s commercial corridor, and need to keep those, you know, change of uses coming in and, and different types of uses coming in. Um, this obviously is a little bit of a peculiar case because, as Mr. Kirkman said, it's a straight zoning district, and we're not completely sure what that ultimate, uh, use will be in that commercial medium, um, you know, set of things that they can do there. So, it's, it's hard to say exactly how the plan will speak to that once it gets adopted, so.
I have a question, Mr. Kirkman. Um, this is a final action. Mr. Kirkman, this is a final action, correct? This is a final action? Okay. And they can, and they have 30 days to appeal this, or how many days do they have to, to appeal?
So, the zoning commission can take final action. They would have 10 days to appeal to the city council if they so choose.
And then it would come back to council?
It would go to the city council if it is appealed, correct.
Great, thank you so much. Any other comments?
Just, just, you know, when I, when I look at this, and I, I realize it's a small piece of land, but I, if I think about this, it's almost as if the way that this is set up right now with what they're having challenges with, they can't take advantage of all of the CM, right? And because of the small tiny piece of LI, they really can't take advantage of all the LI. I mean, is, is that kind of a, I mean, it's .45 acres.
Right. So, at the end of the day, this use, which is allowed in the CM district, needs to have parking associated with it, and the parking is an area in a zone that does not allow the use. Um, and I will mention to the commission, we had a case of, I don't know, about six months ago, I guess, for a restaurant use where some of the parking, if you remember, was onsite, was the same conversation, where in order to redevelop the site and reuse it, that that needed to be addressed.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion? Or, Ms. Kings? Clarification. I think we've gotten in the weeds on this event center, which has absolutely nothing to do with what's before us tonight. What we're being asked to do is to rezone a piece of property from LI to CM so that it matches the zoning of the property that's on the front. That's all we're here to do. Does that mean you want to make a motion? I, I was, I was watching the heads nod, so I, I think we're good.
Where I, where I diverge on that is that there are prohibited uses right now based on the zoning. And so, to me, I, I mean, it, it is a change. I mean, I, I think about, when I think about land use, classic land use, I mean, we're talking about a use table. And there are certain uses that are, quite frankly, would have to be, there would have to be some different conditions met for them to be available. In this case, this is something that allows more uses to be available. And so, where I'm, where I'm struggling with this, I, I honestly, it's a simple thing, but I just, I keep thinking, if somebody actually does want to appeal this, they've got to pay the money now if I approve this tonight. And they've had no ability to interact, and that's, I, I struggle with that. So, I'm, I, it could have been, it could, would they, I mean, this could have been a conditional zoning, and I probably would just let it go. But it's not. It's a straight zoning, which to me is, falls under, in my mind, a little bit more scrutiny. So, I'm, I'm on the fence.
I just, I just- The chair is looking for a motion.
I'll do a motion.
And that will decide everything.
I'd just like to say before I make the motion, that the, the building in question for the events exists already, has already been zoned, and we're only talking about this small piece of land behind it. So, with that in mind, item Z24-08-010, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at a portion of 2645 Randallman Road from LI Light Industrial to CM Commercial Medium to be consistent with the adapted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future build format and future land use map. The proposed C-dash-M zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits the negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Magid and Ms. Turner. All those in favor, we may want to raise hands on this as well. Please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Those opposed? Raise your hand and say aye.
For opposed.
So, um, this is less than our six original votes. So, it's a favorable recommendation, and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 city council meeting. I'll take liberty as a chair and say that I would strongly encourage the applicant to do a little more outreach and to be a little more formal about a presentation when it comes to city council. Uh, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item PLP 24-33, Z2409008, an annexation and original zoning request from County AG Agricultural to City PUD Planned Unit Development, and consideration of the associated unified development plan for the properties identified as 5936 Burlington Road and 626 Knox Road. Road and 626 Knox Road, generally described as west of Knox Road and south of Burlington Road, 71.08 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, showing that it's currently zoned County AG, and this request is for an annexation, an original zoning, to city planned unit development. There's also the Unified Development Plan that is to be considered with this request. North of the request is zoned County Agricultural and County Public and Institutional. East of the request is zoned County Agricultural and City CDRM 18. South of the request is zoned County AG, and west of the request is zoned County AG and City LI. This is an aerial map of the subject property, showing that it currently contains agricultural land and undeveloped land. North of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and religious assembly uses. East of the request contains agricultural land, single-family dwellings, and undeveloped land. South of the request contains single-family dwellings and agricultural land, and west of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped, and agricultural land, and a warehouse and distribution facility. This is the northern portion of the subject property, as seen from Burlington Road. This is the southern portion of the subject property, as seen from Knox Road. This image shows undeveloped land located north of the request on Burlington Road, zoned County AG. This is a single-family dwelling located north of the request, also zoned County AG. This is the religious assembly use that is located north of the request, zoned County And this is undeveloped land located northeast of the request, zoned City CDRM 18. This is agricultural land located east of the request on Knox Road, zoned County AG. This is a fire station located east of the request, zoned County AG. This is agricultural land located south of the request on Knox Road, zoned County AG. This shows the driveway for a single-family dwellings and an industrial use located south of the request on Knox Road, zoned County AG. This is a single-family dwelling located west of the request on Paisley Farm Road, zoned County AG. And this is the public's distribution facility located west of the request on Burlington Road, zoned City LI. This view is facing southeast on Burlington Road, the subject property is on the right. And this view is facing northwest on Burlington Road, the subject property is on the left. This view is facing south on Knox Road, the subject property is on the right. And this is facing northeast on Knox Road, the subject property is on the left. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential and industrial on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports the comprehensive plans, filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses where we live, work, and attend school to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The request also supports a creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The planned unit development district, as requested, as conditioned, is primarily intended to accommodate single-family homes, townhomes, and accessory uses. The proposed original zoning request allows uses that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, height, and visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the lower-density residential uses on adjacent tracks. And I can answer any questions that you have at this time. I can also show the Unified Development Plan if that's desired. Since we've got this up, the Technical Review Committee recommended approval of the Unified Development Plan with two conditions. The conditions are outlined here on the UDP. The first is, on the bottom right, there's a new standard condition that Water Resources is asking for, and that's just going to be standard notes moving forward, so that's been requested. And then the second one is to use the zoning conditions that were proposed. The zoning condition that's shown on here is slightly different, so.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Seeing none, the applicant has up to 10 minutes to speak. And anyone else in support of the application?
I'm Tom Carroll, Fox Rothschild, 2:30 North Elm Street. Here tonight representing Polte Home Company. Polte is represented by Mr. Kenneth Binkley, and we also have a D on Ground from Davenport Engineering with us tonight if you have transportation questions. As a high level of what this application is all about, basically, it's yet one more PUD rezoning that you're seeing for townhomes and single-family. You seem to have one or two of these come through every meeting. The significant thing with this application is that it's in the eastern part of Greensboro. It's near where the jobs are now coming in, that part of the region. It's filling in what are clearly some growth gaps, and with Mr. Clegg here, I'm going to say it's consistent with just about every plan or policy that anybody can identify. In other words, Polte has followed the plans adopted by the city and is doing what you have asked Polte and other applicants to do. If we need to come back and see this site plan, I have it here, but this is basically, it's a typical site plan, it's very well laid out so that the environmentally sensitive areas are protected, and it shows, you know, where the turn lanes, et cetera, would have to be.
Mr. Carroll, I think it's safe to say that this area is topographically challenged as far as.
It does have some top. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And you can see that in the site plan, yes. Who asked you to support this? Who is here to support this? First of all, multi-generational owners. This is an unusual request. Both of the families that own this land have owned it for multiple generations. Ms. Lois Miles is here. If you would, raise your hand, Ms. Miles. Ms. Miles' family has owned this for 132 years. They have owned it since 1892, and she's here to ask you to support it. Your Technical Review Committee gives you a big nod and says it meets all issues, it meets everything that they would be concerned about. Your department staff, your planning staff here tonight is recommending it. We had a very nice neighborhood meeting, it's one of the nicest I've had in a long time. We sent a seven-page letter out, and nine people came, if you count the infant who was there with them, and everybody looked at us and said, you know, thumbs up. And of course, all your land use plans and policies support this. I would like to point out that it is in growth tier one. The significance of being in growth tier one is not just that the infrastructure is in place, but that by our policies, when the infrastructure is in place, it's where continued annexation shall be encouraged. This is part of the city's adopted definition of growth tier one. I mentioned a moment ago, this is filling in the gaps. This is nothing but a snip from GIS that shows how Greensboro is systematically taking in and annexing a lot of these satellite areas so that growth will eventually fill in. And then this is the last image I would like to show you. In blue, you have a 71-acre tract owned by the two families, but to the immediate west is the Mammoth Public Distribution Facility. So it's not like this project is out in the middle of an agricultural area. There's a subdivision just to the north, there's industrial to the left, the area is growing, and we just want this to be done right. I think Ms. Miles would like to speak in the remaining time that we have. I'm glad to answer any questions, by the way.
Thank you. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Lois Miles, 5045 Harvest Road in McLeansville. I am, of course, speaking in support of this project, in large part due to the infeasibility of my being able to keep the land with the tax amount, and I just, I have no personal use for the property. And also, I believe that this project is one of the best uses for the land, much better than some industrial or commercial enterprises that could be asked to be approved. As Mr. Carroll said, the growth is coming. We are on the west, of course bordered by the Public's Distribution Center, and on the intersection east by the Stony Creek, Whitsit Commercial Area. So I would just like to say I do support the efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. We have four minutes and 46 seconds remaining for anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the application. Seeing none, we have up to 10 minutes available for anyone who would like to speak in opposition. If there's more than one, if you'd line up at the podium, we would appreciate it. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Yes. My name is Cheryl Lyle. The last name is spelled like low, L-O-W-E, and I live at 662 Knox, and I also own property across the road, I think at 661 Knox. You really didn't have a checkbox that fit my situation when I signed in to speak. I am not opposed specifically to the zoning. I know Lois, I support her and her efforts. My concern is the traffic. And I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to share my concerns with you about Knox Road. I live in the section that starts where this property is, the corner of Burlington Road and Knox Road, and then goes up to Knox Road and Mount Hope Church Road. There are 10 businesses entrances on this section, which is 10 miles long. They're all, you know, small businesses. There's also 17 residences. Most of the business is on the Mount Hope Church side, most of the residents are on the Burlington Road side. And there's, this is a country road. There's seven curves on this road in this two-mile stretch. And out of the 17 residences, in my opinion, about 11 are driveways that would be considered hidden driveways. The view could be obstructed by a curve or a hill, and I'm one of those. I have a curb that I have to, I choose to roll down my window when I come out to the end of my driveway to hear if anything's coming before I pull out. There's also Guilford County Fire Department on this road in this section I'm talking about, and you saw that in the presentation. One of my concerns is the speed limit. There is not a posted speed limit on this two-mile section. There is at least one sign in each direction visually indicating that it's a yellow signs that a curve is approaching, and it has 45 miles an hour there. So I think a lot of people assume it's 55 miles an hour, and they drive that way. And unfortunately, in 2015, I believe, an Eastern Guilford High School student was killed in this section when the car he was riding in lost control in a curve on a hill and hit a school bus. And Eastern Guilford's only three mi, approximately three miles away, both the high school and the middle school. So we do have school traffic on this road as well. And there have been three recent rezonings on this two-mile track, and they're big, or excuse me, two-mile section of the Knox Road, and they're big tracks. And there's one in Guilford County, it's parcel 116790, and it is a 23-acre track that backs up to a 42-acre track on Bloomfield Road, and it has been approved, you know, but it has not yet been developed. And then there's one in the Greensboro city limits that borders my county property, and it's tracks 117383 and track 117418, both currently owned by American Express, according to the GIS map. They did have a potential buyer in 2023 who got it rezoned to light industrial. The lawyer came and met with me, and he told me that the city had planned or agreed to install a street to this property, and this is 100 acres, both of those tracks. So it has yet to be developed. And then there was a case before you last month, is my understanding. It's zoning case PLZ 2424 that was approved, and is my understanding, I didn't gain knowledge of this until after the fact, but that it's being appealed next week. So there's a lot of big development coming, and I get that. I support economic development, and I support meeting the housing need. My concern is we still have a country road. It's no longer a farming commuting, see, when my in-laws and my husband's grandparents were farming it, but it's still a country road. And anything that you can do, I've spoken each time there's been a rezoning, and people have been very gracious, the committee members, in hearing it, but anything you can do, any conditions or provisions to be sure that the safety of our new residents and our current residents is protected, if it's the speed limit, if it's posting hidden driveway signs, anything you could do, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that would like to speak in opposition, we have four minutes and 54 seconds. Seeing none, the applicant has up to five minutes of rebuttal time if you care to make any further comments.
I'll only return to the podium to thank Mrs. Lowe for making it clear what she has said to us, that she does not oppose this rezoning. If you have questions of Ms. Brown with Davenport, she is here and is able to answer questions about what the traffic study says and traffic in the region. I would leave that to you.
Thank you.
Ms. King? Mr. Carroll, the traffic impact study, was that shared at your meeting to where they could see what Davenport was recommending?
Yes. It was in, I think, page six of a seven-page letter. It was a snip from the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor with the rebuttal time? There's four minutes and 38 seconds. If not, then those in opposition have up to five minutes of rebuttal time as well if there's any further comment in opposition. Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. And we'll be looking actually for three motions, one for annexation, one for zoning, and then one for the UDP.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. I think the gentleman, did he say that he did have a meeting? He reached out to the surrounding property owners? There was a meeting? I didn't see the notices. I didn't know if he provided. I didn't see the notices, I didn't know if he provided it, and maybe I missed it. Oh, okay, I, I, I don't think I received it, okay. Thank, thank you.
Sure, thank you for asking. Do we have a motion on the annexation?
Mary Skeens, I make a motion to approve the annexation for 4936 Burlington Road and 626 Knox Road.
Commissioner Gilmer, say.
Thank you, Ms. Skeens and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor of the annexation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then we'll need a motion on the zoning, please.
I'll do it. All right. In regards to agenda item Z dash twenty-four dash zero-nine dash zero-zero-eight, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes this action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at 5936 Burlington Road and 626 Knox Road from County AG Agricultural to City PUD Plan Unit Development to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Conference of Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with Conference of Plans' future built format and future land use map. Two, the proposed City PUD zoning district has condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Catherine Magid. Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Magid. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? And then the final would be on the UDP, please.
I would motion that we approve the UDP.
With the two added conditions?
With the two added conditions.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, so, thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? None. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council Meeting.
So I guess the question to Chair O'Connor, I think we discussed earlier, about bringing forward the neighborhood conservation overlay as the next item, and moving the type-three modification back, is that still the correct and desire of the commission?
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you.
Okay.
Next, we'll have a staff presentation on the Friendly Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission members. My name is Russ Clegg, I manage the Long Range Planning Division in the Planning Department. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about the West Friendly Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. Tonight, we're asking that the commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to City Council. That can be either a positive or not positive for adopting the plan, and if it is positive, you can include changes that you recommend to the elements of the, of the overlay. City Council will hold the public hearing and consider adoption. That's tentatively scheduled for their meeting on October fifteenth. This process was proposed and brought forward by residents in the area through a petition process. I'm going to give you an overview of what a neighborhood conservation overlay or an NCO is, the process for creating one, and then talk specifically about the West Friendly Avenue proposal. So before I get moving, the area covered by the, by this proposed NCO is the properties fronting Friendly Avenue from Holden Road down to West Ridge Road. We sent out over eleven hundred letters because of the, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer that we do for notifications. The properties that are included in this are outlined in gold here. There are a few gaps that I'll speak to in a later slide. So, a neighborhood conservation overlay is a zoning tool, and it tailors cer- certain dimensional standards based on the existing development pattern in a neighborhood. In our older neighborhoods, sometimes they were developed to different standards and a different style than the current zoning would allow. So this helps to ensure that when new development occurs, it fits in better with that existing context, and the recommendations would be tailored to that existing context. As an overlay, it does remain consistent if the base zoning changes. What a NCO does not do, it does not regulate the land use, it doesn't change the base zoning. If this is adopted, the properties will remain R-three. It does not mean that somebody can't come in and request a change to a different zoning district. If that request is granted, then the particular pieces of the overlay would be what governs those dimensional standards. It also doesn't regulate building interiors or exteriors, painting or reg- regular maintenance, and it does not prevent demolitions. So, the basic process for creating an NCO, it's initiated generally through a petition. It can also be created by direction from City Council, but generally we see them through a petition process. And that needs to include the signatures from twenty-five percent of the property owners that would be in the proposed boundary. Once we receive that in the application, staff looks and makes a determination that the area has some common characteristics that make it cohesive and makes sense as a, as an area covered by one overlay. If that is determined, then we work with the neighborhood to create the standards and the plan that goes with that. At that point, if we're all on board with the same standards, then a second petition process occurs. This one has to be signed by at least fifty-one percent of the property owners covered in the overlay. That does not obligate the city to do anything other than hold a public hearing process. It just starts us moving in that direction. We do stress that that's a minimum requirement and not a target. We know that the more signatures we get on that, the, the better the application is. And then we move into the public hearing process. We get recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission and final action by City Council. A couple of other things, these really only covers new construction. It doesn't apply to existing houses or change anything about how, how the existing houses are, are viewed in terms of being conforming structures. But if there's new construction, site plans, those types of things, then they'd be reviewed under the new parts of the overlay. We also have some language that speaks to replacement in case of fire or accidental damage. If somebody's, is a little bit nonconforming because of the overlay, they can build back in the original footprint in the case of fire. So the neighborhood in this case, they began speaking with us during the rezoning process and asked questions about the NCO, and then went through the signature process and required the necessary signatures to start the process moving forward last fall. We did some initial analysis. And then the area that you see outlined in gold here is the area that is covered by the proposed overlay. I mentioned there's a few gaps. Those gaps are either due to the fact that they're city property, there's a couple of parks, there's a fire station, there's a vacant lot, or there are a couple of instances where there are cul-de-sacs that have houses with the backs facing friendly, or the backs towards Friendly Avenue, or they have cul-de-sacs where the sides face Friendly Avenue, so the context of those is different, and those were not included in the, in the overlay area. The zoning in the area is R-three. That is a zoning category that covers detached, single-family housing of up to three dwelling units per acre. It does allow some other uses, including schools and churches. We did a comparison of the existing dimensional standards for R-three, which you see on the left, and some of what we saw when we did a desktop survey of the conditions out in, in the neighborhood. There's a few differences. The lot widths generally are wider than the allowed seventy, or the minimum seventy-five feet. They are up, average a hundred-and-twenty-four feet. The front setback, the minimum in this district is thirty-five feet. Front setback average is ninety-two feet. Side setbacks, or rear setback, rather, is at ten feet and the average is twenty-four feet. We also noted that a large majority are one-story, and that most of them face Friendly Avenue. I'll just say, these are averages, and though there is some change on the corridor, it's generally a fairly smooth change as you go to the west. The yards kind of get a little bit bigger, and the houses are a little bit farther back, but that's a fairly smooth transition. So having done that analysis, we started our public process. We had a meeting with residents in the area in January. We described to them what a neighborhood conservation overlay is, how it works, things it does not do. We discussed the character-defining elements of that section of Friendly Avenue. They talked about the tree-lined street, the number of trees in the yards, the generous front setbacks, and the sort of character that creates as you move through the corridor on the street. And we also made sure that we had consensus on moving forward with the process. There was a small group of neighbors that we met with. In between these two meetings, we met again on April ninth with the whole neighborhood and talked about what elements to include and to determine the specifics for those elements, so the, how we would address those items they wanted to address. So those elements include the front setback, side setback, the height, the orientation, and tree conservation. For front setbacks, the proposed ordinance for vacant, uh, will, for a vacant lot will be the average of the two closest developed properties. This is somewhat similar to the contextual infill development or standard that's in the Land Development Ordinance that rather than having a thirty-five-foot number speaks to the average along the, the houses to kind of continue that smooth transition. This codifies that, and also means that if a different use were to come in, office or multifamily, you'd still have that same setback. Side setbacks will move from ten to twenty feet if the lots are larger than ninety feet or wider than ninety feet. For narrow lots, they would go back to the ten-foot. We didn't want to create a situation where it was difficult to build on a lot. Some of the lots are smaller, so in addition to that front setback, they wanted to make sure there was room to, to build a, a house if somebody wanted to build a new house. Height, height has been proposed to be reduced from fifty feet to forty feet. They do, there was conversation about the number of one-story houses and garages, and they want to make sure there is ability to put accessory dwelling units on, on garages if people wanted to. So they said that those structures could be up to twelve feet taller than the principal structure, although not any taller than forty feet. For orientation, the new NCO states that the principal front building facade would be oriented towards West Friendly Avenue. And finally, tree conservation. Tree's very important to the residents in the area. Looking at the pattern of trees, it was clear that most of the trees were in the front section of people's front yards, and that was really created the most impact. So the tree conservation is limited to the fifty, first fifty feet from the edge of the curb. In that area, in cases of new construction, there would be a requirement seventy-five percent of the trees are, uh, four inches or larger in diameter be preserved. If for some reason that can't be met, then you would be allowed to take down more trees, but then they would be replaced up to that ratio. And again, this is only for new construction. If you're not, you know, if you're just staying in the same house, you could manage your trees any way that you see fit. So at this point, I'd like to answer any questions that you might have about the proposed NCO.
If I could interject here, what we'd like to do right now is entertain any questions. We'll reserve comments till after the public hearing. So if you have any questions, please feel free.
I'll go.
Thank you, Ms. Skeens.
Okay, let's start with tree preservation.
Mm-hmm.
It states, "The first fifty feet of the front setback measured from the wide of way is an area of tree con- for the conservation, period." If you look at the south side of Friendly Avenue, the, the majority of those houses are fifty feet is their entire front yards because they sit closer to the street on the south side. So, it talks about in our LDO that tree conservation area is, uh, includes existing trees and their critical root zones, and the purpose of the tree conservation area is to encourage the preservation of healthy trees that are four inches or greater. Specifically, and I asked Mike about it, he says it only refers to new construction, but that's not what it says here. It says that the first fifty, fifty feet is in a tree conservation area. So, how does that affect people that are, it's not new construction, it's existing construction? They want to thin out trees, they want to get rid of magnolia trees that are dropping leaves everywhere else, and they're in that fifty feet? And it's not new construction?
So the, the, it does say the first fifty feet of the front setback are in areas of tree conservation. It then goes on to say, "In cases of new construction or redevelopment, that seventy-five percent of the trees need to be preserved according to LDO standards."
But it doesn't say existing. It says, "In the cases of," that first sentence is defined. The fifty foot of every house in this overlay is in an area of tree conservation.
We can certainly clarify that language, and the intent is that this does not apply unless there's a permit pulled. Yeah, we wouldn't have anybody checking on any trees in the area. If there's a permit pulled, that's when this would be applied.
I think I read it clearly. It's basically saying the fifty feet is the conservation area, however, in cases of new construction or redevelopment, the only thing that triggers, right, is seventy-five percent. At that point, you're required to maintain seventy-five percent of trees, four inches or larger, diameter breast height. I had, I looked that one up. So about four and a half feet tall. Right.
DBH.
I told Mary. I went in my yard to find out what about four inches is, that's about this. So like, it's, you know, it's not a sapling, but it's also not like, you know, an established tree. Pass it down to anybody that wants to see it. But this is four inches in, in diameter, right here, so.
I, I still think that it's not clear.
I, I.
And we can certainly work to clarify the language.
This, this only applies to new construction?
That is correct.
Then it needs to say that. It currently doesn't.
We can make that change, yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm gonna keep rolling unless someone else.
Keep going, you have, you have a list, I know.
I do, nonconformities. All right, and it states that, you know, in cases of house burning down, that you can rebuild in the same footprint. All right, it doesn't address tear downs, and we've got one of those at forty sixteen West Friendly. It is a lot that is two and a half acres, it's two and a half acres. So sidelines, setbacks, but rear line is not a problem. But the house is twice as big, and it, it doesn't begin to fit in the footprint of what was there.
And that's not, we not, we are not saying you have to build back in the same footprint. There's been a concern that if this inadvertently, due to some accident, there was a fire, some kind of natural disaster, a tree falls on a house, we don't want to create a situation where somebody has to build back. If their house happens to stick a couple of feet in front of the neighbors, and they want to build back exactly where they were, this would allow them to do that. But it does not mean that you can't build a bigger house if you, we understand most people are gonna, they tear their house down, they want to get a build a bigger house. So that would be, what this really talks to is, if they do build that bigger house, is it in line with the other houses in the area and kind of fit in that context?
Well, the answer I got from staff was that, um, the potential would be there that if you wanted to build a house that didn't fit the footprint, you're gonna have to go get a variance to build it. That's just additional layering.
If there was, for some reason, you wanted to go into that side setback or something like that, of course, you would need to get a variance. But you would, if you, if you fit the parameters of the, the NCO and the rest of the LDO, of course, then you would be able to build up the large houses you wanted to.
And I would say that's fairly consistent with our nonconforming structures, standards we have in the ordinance generally, that you can stay within that existing footprint, but once you expand beyond that, you're subject to whatever those existing rules are, whether you agree with those rules or not. That's the way the ordinance generally works with those nonconforming structures. Any additions would have to meet those standards, et cetera, on there.
I still feel it's not clear.
Yeah, and this, this uses that language about nonconformities and adds, I think that stops at fifty percent. So it's kind of expands that to say if your whole house is destroyed, you still can rebuild back on that footprint if, if you want to, or it's just some tragic accident that would cause you to need to.
Well, I'm specifically concerned about tear downs because we're gonna see a lot more of that based on the, the size of the houses and the age of the houses on Friendly. So I, I, I'm concerned about hamstringing somebody who buys a house, tears it down. and then wants to, to build something that they're gonna have to go, they can go get variances or make some more adjustments, and then they're still gonna have to deal with the trees because it would be new construction at that point, and bulldozers and trees don't get along real well, so.
Right, so they would be able to build as large a house as they could fit into the, the lot if they chose to tear it down and build a new house, so.
Okay, next question. Thirty-seven oh-one West Friendly is the corner of Friendly and Holden, and, and we've dealt with that over the years and different requests for rezoning. That house sits, as a result of Friendly being widened, that house is right up on the street. You're not gonna rebuild that house in that same footprint. And it's, uh, two-point-seven acres. So, and I had asked the question, is this overlay going to restrict future development to the point that we might be considered, uh, as a, an illegal taking? And this was brought up by an attorney, um, and outside of the city. It, it, it bothers me that that particular property happens to be included in the overlay because it's not gonna sit like that forever. It's gonna be torn down, something different's gonna be built. And I realize it would require zoning and that sort of thing, but I'm surprised that that particular property is in there other than to potentially, uh, have, the neighborhood feels like they would have control over what could be done.
Well, I'll say from our perspective, the, this process is not to stop. New development is to, to allow new development to happen in a way that fits in with the context. So we would hope that the neighbors would be able to express what their main concerns are about a change and be able to say, "Well, if you build according to the standards, you're more in line with what neighbors are looking for on a new project." So we certainly understand at some point that house is probably gonna be torn down and turned into something else, um, but it would hopefully, because of these standards, be more in line with what the neighbors see as, um, important to them.
I'm gonna shut up. Okay, again, questions only.
Okay, okay, I've got a couple about, um, tree conservation.
Quick to remind the commission, we do have speakers, so I don't, I don't want to labor too much and not listen to some of the speakers that are coming up as well. But go ahead, Ms. Ryan.
Okay, this'll be quick, I promise. Okay, so the tree conservation says that the NCO allows trees to be removed during construction as determined by the planning director, by the planning department director, who?
They say i- if it's beyond that seventy-five percent, then there would need to be, you might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, then the plan director term is a term used in the ordinance generically to talk about planning staff. We actually have a municipal arborist on staff that they would be the ones through the plan review process that would be trying to evaluate that. So they would be helping determine which trees really did need to be removed and which ones really should stay and work with the developer to figure out how that works. So we have technical expertise on staff. Plan director is the general term the ordinance uses to say planning staff.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so about non, so, so I'm clear about dead trees are not counted in the equation and, okay, and all that. So nonconformity, um, I think I'm clear about that except it states that all structures already existing at the adoption of the plan are considered to be conforming with the standards, right?
Correct.
So I've, I've got that understood. Okay, great. The tree replacement, I understand. The NCO only increases the side setback on lots wider than ninety feet. These lots are increased to twenty feet from the LDO of ten feet. Did I get that right?
Yes, the standard for R three is ten feet, and of the wider lots, that would go up to twenty feet.
Okay. The lots that are less than ninety feet must comply with the existing LDO of ten feet.
Correct.
Okay. The front setbacks, okay, this setback is determined by the two existing houses, and you explained that. The front setback for vacant, for the vacant lot will be an average of the two existing. Okay, I got, I'm clear, thank you.
Were there any other questions for now? All right, then we are ready for some speakers for our public hearing, and as discussed in advance, we will allow three minutes per speaker. If you would line up and come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Nikki Kohut, and I'm battling cold, so if I start coughing, I apologize. Um, I live in Old Starmount Forest at thirty-nine twenty-one West Friendly Avenue with my husband and three boys. I'm here this evening to express my support of the West Friendly Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay. A Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District is a zoning tool used to preserve, revitalize, protect, and enhance, uh, significant older areas within a community beyond what is specified in the land development ordinance. The NCO came together as a request by the neighborhood to preserve the unique elements of the West Friendly Avenue neighborhood, which has drawn families, neighbors, and visitors alike to Greensboro for over half a century. The area defined on the map as the area of properties along the West, uh, Friendly Avenue and Holden Road up to West Ridge Road has long been established as a center point of multiple historic Greensboro neighborhoods converging. These neighborhoods include Starmount Forest, Hamilton Lakes, and Hamilton Forest, making it an attractive, desirable area for visitors and families alike. With its older homes, the neighborhood has seen a resurgence in young homeowners who desire to revitalize and improve their homes in an established residential setting. The development patterns on West Friendly Avenue amongst the Starmount, Hamilton Lakes, and Hamilton Forest neighborhoods have changed little since the nineteen-fifties and sixties when they were first conceived. Homes in the West Friendly Avenue neighborhood are popular and highly sought after. Many of the homes are spacious ranch styles, classic colonials, and a few Cape Cod's from the nineteen-forties and fifties, where additions to original houses have occurred. Most have been to the rear of the house, leaving the view shed from Friendly Avenue intact. Each home has its own unique charm contributing to the neighborhood's character. As such, we've had great interest and support from the neighbors within the NCO and surrounding neighborhoods to see that the area remains as close to its current form as possible respective to new development. Over the course of the last year, we began the process of submitting a petition to the city for the creation of the NCO. We held several public meetings from January through April to get feedback from the neighborhood, the major issues we wanted to address through the NCO adoption. In those conversations, we learned that what's cherished are the large residential lots with deep setbacks. I'm the only one speaking currently, so I think they're gonna give me the time to finish.
No, it's three minutes per speaker.
Okay. Um, anyhow, um, with regards to Mrs. Keens' earlier question about why.
Thank you.
The property was included on the corner is because it's currently zoned R three, it's been to zoning before, and it was denied rezoning, and we feel like with, um, the neighboring, uh, home being R three on that side of Holden Road, that, um, it, it conforms to the neighborhood characteristics.
I can turn the mic off, but the time is up, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Freyaldenhoven, I live at four thousand and three West Friendly Avenue. It's the south side of Friendly Avenue at about the midpoint of the proposed boundaries for the overlay district. What I wanted to emphasize with you tonight is that this twelve-month process was really grounded in the recognition that the property owners have of some of the unique characteristics of these properties and a better understanding of the history that, that, why that came about. So we wanted to be able to protect that and felt like that there was a, um, a reason that made it an effort to take some of those considerations in, intact. So we want to also, um, say that we would have brought, would have liked to have brought this proposal to you, uh, beforehand or earlier, but we understood that the process did take time. We made sure that we got enough recognition with the property owners over the, the holidays celebrated at the New Year's. We tried not to, um, coordinate public meetings during those times as well as the times in the summer months when people were out of town. So that helped us get a, a broad consensus of our proposals. I wanted to commend staff for the work that they did with us. They were very patient, they answered all of our questions, they helped coordinate the times and the meetings that were most, uh, effective for our efforts and, um, really took the time to help us prepare the, um, proposal that we felt like didn't, wasn't, uh, have a lot of constraints to it. So we'd ask for your support tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Drinker. I live at forty-twenty West Friendly Avenue. I've lived there for thirty years, raised my family there. We really enjoy where we live and it's a great place to live. I'm here tonight to ask your support for this zoning, uh, district. What initiated this process, you're probably well aware, was a zoning development, proposed development in our neighborhood that completely ignored our neighborhood and the context that made us unique and what we felt made it special here. It's been a very long, exhausting battle for us. You've probably, you haven't heard a lot of it. But, you know, while that battle is still ongoing to some degree, what we do want to do is not have to keep going through that over and over again because this is just the first that has come into our neighborhood, and it's gonna continue coming right behind this. But we need your help in doing this. How do we combat this? But primarily, it's not combating it, but give them guidance of how they can better meet and fit into our neighborhood. We're not, to be clear, we're not against redevelopment. As a resident, while I recognize the fact of how development can have negative impacts, I'm also an architect and also know how the power and what a new development can do to a surrounding community as long as it enhances, complements, and works within the exist, existing con, context of that community. But what we don't have right now is a context for them to go by. And that's what the NCO does, uh, as Russ did a great job. The part of this is, you know, zoning was not in place when these, these properties were developed initially. We're trying to provide the initial, you know, kind of supplement overlay, to also find what are those characteristics of this neighborhood that we want to promote and extend so that when developers come in, they respect that. So we ask for your support in this, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other, others who have something to offer that hasn't been presented or anyone in opposition to this? If you'd come forward, please. Three minutes per speaker. If you'd go ahead and line up at the podium, please. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Art Close, seven fifteen Pembroke West. Ms. Grangle, diameter is the measurement across the circle, so you need four inches, it's gonna be about this wide. And then the circumference, yours is probably about four inches in circumference. We just want to say they're gonna be a little bit bigger trees. All right, diameter is gonna be going across it. That one's about a one-inch diameter, okay? We're, we're, we didn't want you to think that we're just looking for twigs and we're gonna protect every twig, okay?
Art, you have to understand something. If you don't mind.
I teach math for a long time.
I have, I have fifty-two trees in my front yard. Okay?
You're my kind of guy.
And so, yeah, I know, and, and so this, this has been, to me, most of my questions that I asked staff, I asked, you know, everybody that I could find, including a very kind woman named Judy Kaiser that called me, was all about this tree conservation aspect of it because I was trying to understand, you know, just, you, you try to empathize, right? You know, what would, what would happen if my house was in this overlay? So what helped me was talking to staff and finding out that, hey, no matter what, if you're not doing any new construction, you know, and, and.
Maintaining your trees, whatever you gotta do.
I've got, I've got two trees right now that I have to take out, and I don't want to contact an arborist about. In fact, to me, that could be unsafe.
Right.
Right? So, so that was where I was at, and I, you know, but keep going.
And we were actually, when we went through this with the staff, and by the way, Russ, your team, Mike, were really terrific, we got into that part, especially when we were talking about ten-foot versus twenty-foot sides, and we did the math and said, "Look, if you got ninety feet and you do twenty feet on each side, the house can only be fifty feet wide. This is gonna be a little shed, right? So we can't do that." We tried to be extremely reasonable as we went through all this, and the same applied with the trees and the things. We really want to protect the neighborhood, but we also understand that people have property rights, and we want them to have those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are y'all? John White, forty-six oh-one West Friendly Avenue. So, um, I appreciate a lot of the questions that you raised, Ms. Keen, um, because these are some of the same questions that I've asked. Let me give you a, a little background. I live in probably one of those, there's about twenty lots that are about point nine north, and I'm one of those properties. Mr. Draker's one of them as well, and several of my neighbors that actually own the larger properties didn't receive any communication about this. And when I looked into why I did not, I found out through the tax department, if y'all had my information incorrect, okay? So I don't blame these individuals for this. But as a person who does this profession, I take very seriously outreach. I take it very seriously. So from my standpoint, I did two public open houses for a project I had with a three-mile buffer radius with forty-one hundred people being notified. I don't mind letting people know about what's going on, okay? But on this matter right here, my property's not a property you can knock on the door of. I live behind a gate, okay? So I don't fault them for not knocking on my door. What I do fault them on is, is this. What has been raised in this, I did not buy my property in twenty-one with these kinds of restrictions around, okay? The tree aspect, I have two of the largest trees on Friendly Avenue in my front yard, hands down. I have two of the largest pendo trees on Friendly Avenue. And ironically, in the presentation the staff prepared, it's actually taken pictures of my block, not of the blocks represented by any of the speakers tonight, okay? Now granted, we're all in the overlay, all right? But my biggest concern is, is ultimately, I haven't received any information. When, this was in opposition of the gentleman that came forward wanting to do the development, you could not ride up and down Friendly Avenue, West Ridge, Holden Road, inside Starmount, Lakewood, so on and so forth without seeing no rezoning signs. They even updated the signs to let you know when the public hearings were gonna be held so that you would show up. And if that's the level of energy you go to, to oppose something, then give me the same level of energy when you want me to understand your perspective and view. I don't oppose this, this overlay. I just don't think it's been well communicated and information has really gotten out to the general public that are impacted. All these people who showed up here tonight, they have full due process related to their democratic rights. But many of these individuals in this audience tonight are not impacted by what's being proposed. Many of the individuals sitting on this front row live on, around the corner from me. I know that for a fact. They're not being impacted, they're not one of the ninety-one properties. So again, let's get back to the core, who's being impacted and communicate with us as property owners, okay? Ms. HoCutt and I, we went to high school together, we lived in the same subdivision when we were in high school. We know each other, okay? And I have had one conversation with her and Art in front of my house related to this. Outside of that, I have received nothing. I called Mr. Clegg, and I called the tax department who filled in the gaps. Other than that, I don't really have a good sense of how this is gonna impact me as a property owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was your address again? I'm sorry, I did not hear your address.
Forty-six oh-one West Friendly Avenue.
West Friendly.
If there is anyone else who intends to speak, you need to line up, please, or we. Yes. If you'd give your name and address, please.
This is rebutting, um, it's time for.
I think we're just taking speakers, correct?
Pardon me?
Three minutes per speaker.
Three minutes per speaker, yes.
My name is Jenny Kaiser, I live at two oh-one Erskine Drive West, uh, in Greensboro, I live around the corner, about one block. I started with this process about 18 months ago and have gotten to know all of our neighbors really well. I would like to point out that I understand that some people probably feel that they were not notified in a timely manner, but I'd like to also point out all of the methods that we did use to notify not only about the rezoning that ended last November, but all about the NCO and the NCO process. We had public meetings that we did publicize, we emailed out to people that opted into our email list. We had a public website that was searchable via Google and Yahoo. So if you typed in "West Friendly Avenue," "preserving West Friendly Avenue," you were brought to the website that consistently had when we were having the meetings, when we were having the meetings on the NCO, and when we were asking for feedback. And if you had any feedback, there was a reply form that you could type in, and you could say what you liked or what you didn't like about the proposed NCO. So we gave people plenty of opportunities in person, and also via the web and electronic media to give us that feedback. We had a Facebook page, and in addition to that, we actually had a text messaging service that if you needed to know when these meetings were going to be, you could give us your phone number, and we would text you out when and where and what the topic was. So I just want to make it clear that while people did not attend and they didn't know about it, it wasn't from lack of effort to make sure that people knew when the meetings were and that we were asking for feedback. Thank you, and I hope you vote yes.
My name is Candida Yoshikai, and I live outside of the NCO area on Friendly Avenue, 5306 West Friendly Avenue.
Could you give your address, please?
5306 West Friendly Avenue.
Thank you.
You actually granted us a variance to build something that stuck out a little, because our house sticks out a little, and you allowed us to do that. You also have approved a medical center across the street from me that is sitting there, not developed, with four uninhabited homes that's waiting to be raised. Friendly Avenue is the prettiest street that we have. We really, this NCO is about helping to maintain the prettiest street we have in Greensboro. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we will close the public hearing, and we will allow... Were you coming to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't think so. We will close the public hearing, will allow comments from the commissioners if there are any further comments. Ms. Gaines?
I'm back to trees. All right. I just want to make public record. If there's a house on Friendly Avenue that is sold or not sold, and someone wants to clearcut their front yard, they've had one tree too many fall on their house, and it's an existing house, they can clearcut and don't have to ask anybody's permission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So the business of the first 50 feet being an area of preconservation, it's only new construction. But that's not what it doesn't say, it's only new construction.
Yeah, well, obviously, we need to clarify the language, but I had the intent that, yes, as you stated.
So can I suggest that that may be part of a recommendation? If one is made, then to clarify the language, to be clear about new construction only? That's the theme I'm hearing from the comments on there, so I'm just trying to not belabor that point.
Well, that's just a couple, because there's been two cul-de-sacs put in on Friendly, Dunkirk and Roundtree. And we didn't have the overlay, and they fit in just fine. I just, I guess what keeps sticking in my mind is one of the emails I received, that I think we all received, was from a gentleman who said, "If I wanted to have a house in a neighborhood with a homeowners' association, I would have purchased a house in a neighborhood with a homeowners' association." And I didn't. I bought here so that I had the freedom to do whatever I wanted to do with my lot." And that's, with the trees, with some of the other restrictions that are put in place, I think it goes too far. We're closed.
Thank you. Thank you. Our public hearing is closed. This is for comments from commissioners. So do I have another? Ms. Turner?
I have a comment, and it really goes beyond the details, because I think that the provisions are quite restrictive. But mainly, my concern is that I find it to be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and it's filling in our framework goal. In general, I don't think that it would support the important goals for responsible growth that that plan stands for to me, and nor would it provide an example of embracing growth rather than stifling it. And so, and in my opinion further, I think that piecemeal changes to the plan would not cure the deficiencies that I find in terms of it's not being consistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Anyone else? Ms. Nagle?
Okay, so there is another existing overlay, West Ridge.
Yes.
Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And thank you, you sent me that. And I compared it to this. It's very similar, except it's gone to, I don't, when was West Ridge done?
Oh, I think 2009.
2009, so it's been like...
Something, I'm a while, yeah.
15 or so years ago. So they added the accessory housing part and a few updates. Okay. So there is an existing overlay.
Yes.
Similar to this.
That is correct.
Okay. So, and the neighborhood outreach of the homes that we're seeing in this picture here, there was a certain percentage of those homes that reacted or were part of the petition? I don't know what percentage of those homes, you know, wanted this.
The first, well, the requirement is that for the, to begin the process, you need to get petition of 25% of the property owners, which they did. And then we move through the process. And then the second requirement is that you get a petition of at least 50% of the property owners. And they got that in, as the percentage is 75 to 80%. We have verifying a few of the ones that are in trust, or, you know, the properties are changing hands in all may shape or form, but probably with those included, it's a little over 80%.
Eighty percent. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So when I started looking at this, I, first thing I do is, you know, what am I doing? Okay? So this is, and Mr. Kirkman, at any point, if I say something false, you can correct me, okay? All right. This is a, this would have been a function of the old planning board at some point, right? This would have not so much been a zoning thing as much as the planning and zoning commission now is going to hear this. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Right. So the adoption of a plan, adjustment on a text amendment, those functions went to... Now, we'll say, actually, to be correct, there's a zoning map amendment associated with this. So that portion would have come through the old zoning commission to establish the boundaries of the overlay.
So, so when I think about this, I have to, I'm considering this differently than I would have six years ago when I joined this commission, okay? What am I being asked to do? All right? So there's a, there is a mechanism in the LDO to allow for an overlay district, is that correct?
Yes.
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 Affirmative. Correct. That overlay district would require us to look at the things that you mentioned, which is development standards associated with that overlay district, the history, and in keeping with that standard to maintain that. Is that, I mean, near as I summarize from what I saw, that's pretty accurate. So then, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying to myself, okay, so, you know, you're going to have to forgive me, I've watched Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory with my daughter this weekend. There's that scene in the beginning where everything is in the fine print down below, and you really can't read it. I had a lot of questions, much the same as Mrs. Gaines. But here's where I kind of come down to it. You're adjusting the setbacks, you're adjusting the building height, small in my mind, still build a two-story house, still build a house, still can rezone it, right? So, and still, if you're not redeveloping the land, you can do whatever you want with your vegetation, which was really important to me, as I mentioned, just in the front yard, 52 trees, right? So I care about that. You know, if I had a large pin oak, and I did have a large pin oak at one point, which I don't ever want those leaves again, I'm going to tell you right now, I don't ever want those leaves again, I would want to be able to do what I needed to do for the health of the tree without having to ask anybody. There's an ice storm coming, whatever. So that's all off the table. I am concerned about 3701, but I'm, this is where I kind of come down to it. We had 16% of our population turn out in our last municipal election. Did you know that? 16%. You got 90 people, 90 homeowners together, and you've got over 80% of them to agree to this. The standard is 50%, which I would not have agreed to. If y'all walked in here with 50%, I wouldn't be saying this right now. Because I personally, I'm skeptical of this, but I think you've met a standard, in my mind, that supports it. I couldn't get 80% of the people in my household agree on much of anything. And, and you've got 80% of the people on this street to agree to this. I mean, that, that's something that I think needs to be taken with a large amount of care from the commission. And so, for that reason alone, in addition to the fact that I think that staff has worked and brought something that meets the standard of what I'm being asked to approve tonight, I'll be supporting it. And I do want to thank Jenny Kaiser, who talked with me multiple times through several of my questions, and Mr. Kirkman for that matter, and Luke Carter for answering, and Russ Clegg for answering questions. I, you know, I take the responsibility seriously, and thank goodness, this is the last time I get to sit up here with y'all, but to me, this, this meets it. If there were one I was going to see, this is, this is it. You had over 80% of the people say, "Sure." So I'll leave it with that.
Got a question.
Anything else? Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, it was clapping for me.
Yeah, yes, that's right. Yes, yes.
Russ, and you, Russ, and you, I know your staff worked on this quite extensively. And your, your professional opinion is going to weigh a lot on me. In your professional opinion, do you think this is the best way to preserve the characteristics of this neighborhood on West Friendly?
I would say, based on what I heard people express in the meeting...
Because I wasn't at the meetings.
Sure. I mean, this really gets at their major concerns. I've been in other processes, it's like where people get, you know, there's a lot of little rabbit holes you can go down. But I do think this speaks to what their main concerns were, which is kind of how, how the road looks when you drive down the street. There's lots of trees, the houses are kind of far away, they don't overwhelm you with, you know, relative to that, in vista. So I think, I think it addresses those concerns, but still allows rezonations and things of that nature. I'll let Mike speak as well.
I mean, I'll concur, Mr. Clegg, the, what this is trying to balance is to preserving a certain context without getting as focused on the use of property and some of those issues. Because that's what's interesting about this tool, is that it's, at the end of the day, the base zoning stays the same, and if the base zoning changes, those usual rights go along with it. But they are developed within a certain context that seems to be consistent with the context that's out there now. So I would say, from that, that is the reason we were recommending in favor of this NCO.
Did you have something else to say, Mr. Peterson? Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
I have to say that I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Turner and Ms. Gaines. I find some of the requirements in here overwhelmingly restrictive, and yet some of it isn't, doesn't address all the questions that would come up. So the depth and breadth of it isn't sufficient to me, but I don't see the need for the plan. I think that what we do as a planning and zoning commission, and the vision that we have and how we deal with those things when they come up, address quite neatly our vision for growth, which is expressed in our 2040 plan. I think we have a vision, and we know that Greensboro is growing, and we know that we have a requirement to somehow find a way to fill in the empty spaces rather than going for sprawl. And I think it's a challenge for us, and I think that our 2040 plan truly addresses a lot of those needs. I believe that our zoning, as it exists, addresses those needs. It's always disconcerting to me, of course, people want their neighborhoods to stay the way they are. And you don't want to see multifamily next to single-family when you're in a single-family neighborhood, yet we have upon us the requirement that we do measured and thoughtful growth. And that's what I think the 2040 plan does for us. And so for me, I find that in conflict with what is proposed here, and my vote is with the 2040 plan. So I am not in favor of this as it's proposed. And that's my view, and everybody, of course, is entitled to their own. Just, no. Sorry, the public hearing is closed. Ms., I'm sorry, sir, there's no dialogue right now, thank you.
Ms. Gaines?
You, you stated it, you and Ms. Turner both stated extremely well that we've got this 2040 plan that encourages infill, and this plan restricts the ability to do that. You've got 4202 West Friendly, that's 1.72 acres, sitting right there, that could be developed into a cul-de-sac. 4200 West Friendly, 1.72 acres also. You've got 3701 West Friendly, that's 2.7 acres. All of these can be done, or could be developed, but it's, this is just too, too restrictive, and it's, I just think it goes beyond the scope of what we're trying to do in Greensboro, encouraging infill. And I have lived my entire life within two miles of Friendly Shop and Center. So I, it's not that I don't understand where you're coming from, it's just, I'm also feeling that we need to encourage growth, and we need to look at options. And I think this plan is, goes beyond what we're trying to do, restricts what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Any response to the public concerns? I'm sorry, we'll have to ask you to leave if you cannot be quiet. This still, excuse me, please. This still goes to city council, there's still a public hearing with city council to be had. And what we have before us is a choice to either recommend a plan and take a vote on that, to recommend the plan with changes, or to not recommend it. In any case, this still goes to city council.
I would make a motion, we recommend the plan.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Angle, Mr. Peterson. We have a motion and a second to recommend this to city council. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of sending it, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five? Okay, in favor of sending it to city council, all those opposed, five to four. And so this... It does...
It does constitute, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a favorable recommendation, and it is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, city council meeting. We are at another point where we typically do take a break. It's 9:20. We will break until 9:30. Thank you.
The following segments are pre-recorded and sponsored by Longworth Productions.
Back now on the special edition of Tribe Today, as we salute some of the folks that work behind the scenes in the city of Greensboro to help improve quality of life for everyone. And one of those folks that does that, day in and day out, is our special guest, first-time visitor to the show, Reginald Mason. And he says, some people call him Reggie, so I don't know, you want me to call you Reggie?
Reggie's fine.
All right. He says his wife calls him Reginald when he gets in trouble. Reginald Reggie is Director of the Transit Department for the City of Greensboro. I'm so glad you're here, welcome.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
We thought before we started taping the show that you're originally from Houston, but aside from that, tell us a little bit about your background, how you came to be here.
Well, I've been working in mass transit well over 25 years now. I've worked in Chicago, Houston, Phoenix.
Baltimore, wasn't it?
San Francisco, Baltimore, and Atlanta.
Yeah.
I've worked both on the private side as consultant and on the agency side.
Yeah, with all that experience, and I'm thinking, gosh, Chicago and Baltimore and all these big cities, some people would say, well, gee, you know, what drew you to Greensboro?
Well, what drew me to Greensboro was really, you know, this current city manager, Tola Joe, but he has a vision for the city of Greensboro and mass transit. And as I looked at the job and the Go-Borough Plan, which was rolled out recently, that really piqued my interest in coming to Greensboro, and then I applied for the position, of course, was, was hired.
Right. So you're, so are you saying, sort of, that your vision sort of aligns right with the city managers?
Yes, it actually, it really, really does when it comes to mass transit and how we want to grow mass transit, not only just in the city of Greensboro, but in the region, to help with the economic development and employment hubs that are moving to our region.
You mentioned, you dropped the phrase on me a second ago, and I think I interrupted you, but you mentioned the term Go-Borough.
Yes.
Now, does that have anything to do with the kind of the long-range vision you're talking about? Explain what that's all about.
Okay, well, the Go-Borough Plan is a long-range transit plan, but we're looking at, essentially, by 2045, the city of Greensboro being car-optional. And with this particular plan, when it was introduced, we introduced two concepts, a ridership concept and a coverage concept. And with that plan, with the ridership concept, it's more frequent service throughout the city and access to jobs, and more, you know, doctor's appointments, shopping, things like that, which, when I say frequent service, I mean 15-minute service on the majority of our routes.
Right.
On the coverage side, that would expand our service throughout the community, but still would be a similar type service that we have now, which is 30-minute and 60-minute type service. The ridership concept, like I said, will give folks more access to jobs and more frequent bus service.
And that's the key to everything, isn't it, Reggie? Is that access, because that can be a barrier to people, trying to get jobs, to healthcare and everything, right?
Yes, it is. That's, that's a big barrier right now, because our current system, we call it a hub-and-spoke system, where all of our buses go into the depot. This system has been like that essentially since 1946.
That's right.
So we need to make some major changes in mass transit to improve how we get folks around the community.
You know, some folks could be watching this and listening to you, and say, well, that's, that's fine, Reggie, but, you know, what does this really mean to me as an individual? How, how can I support what you're trying to do, what your vision is, or can the community help support it?
Well, how that can help is, you know, right now, like I said, with the Go-Borough Plan, we're gonna be, we had a consultant that went out and did surveys for us in the community, we received over 700 respondents, and they were all positive, you know, about which concept we should use, ridership and our coverage.
So you're getting input from people?
We get input from people, and also, you know, to do this, you know, we would have to go on the ballot to get a transit tax to support the growth of mass transit.
I got you. So when that comes about, you're gonna need everybody pulling together.
We're gonna need everyone pulling together, because, you know, right now, you know, there's a phrase that the American Public Transportation Association uses, it says, as public transit grows, the community grows.
Absolutely.
And what they mean by that, it brings in a lot more economic development.
I'll tell you what, you, you, I just think what you're doing is great, and I'm glad you're on the job and have that vision and everything. I want to put it up on screen before I forget, greensboro-nc.gov, it's the general website, which we'll keep reminding folks about throughout the program. Reggie, thanks so much for what you're doing, and I'm glad you're here and doing it.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
All right, will you come back sometime?
Yes, I will.
All right. For all of us here on Tribe Today, I'm Jim Longworth, we'll see you next week.
We are all aware of the importance of water and how it moves. From the highest points of land, it moves downstream through streams and rivers, eventually making its way to the sea. Cities like ours collect and treat this resource so it can be used safely by all residents. But this water does not belong to us alone. Once it's been used, it's collected again, treated, and released back into those same rivers and streams, which take it downstream to our neighbors and other towns and cities who depend on it just as much as we do. The city of Greensboro Water Resources collects and treats as much as 11.9 billion gallons per year. Take a moment to think about how you use water daily. When we take showers, we use soap, shampoo, and other products. When we wash dishes and our clothes, we use detergent. Most of what we use water for at home, aside from drinking and cooking, require that we add some product to it. Any personal care products, cosmetics, hair treatment, things that you wash off, all end up in the wastewater that is treated and sent to our neighbors, who use the water for the very same things. It's important that we consider the safety of our downstream neighbors as we use water in our city. By being aware of the types of products we are using, we can avoid the buildup of harmful byproducts. For example, 1-4 dioxane, which is a byproduct of a manufacturing process called ethoxylation, is found in many common household products. This organic chemical is one of many found in trace quantities in both ground and surface waters throughout the U.S. Uses and sources of 1-4 dioxane include industrial solvent stabilizer, found in paint strippers, varnishes, soaps, makeup, and personal care products, antifreeze, et cetera. It also exists as an unintended byproduct in manufacturing and recycling of certain plastic and polyester products. Because 1-4 dioxane is a byproduct of the manufacturing process, it's not listed on the label of household products. Read the label of any product that generates SUDs. Try to avoid chemicals ending in ETH, for example, sodium lauryl sulfate, as well as products that have chemicals ending in oxanol and PEG. Often, these chemicals are found in things like laundry detergents, shower gels, and personal care products that create SUDs. Paints, dyes, waxes, and grease can also contain these chemicals. You can look for unfragranced castile soaps, or wording like USDA organic and made safe as alternatives. For more information about these alternative products, you can visit the Environmental Protection Agency website at www.epa.gov/saferchoice/products. The city of Greensboro's Water Resources Department has been investigating sources of 1-4 dioxane within the city's sewer collection and wastewater treatment facilities since 2015. Considerable progress has been made, and the department continues to work proactively with local industries through the Industrial Pretreatment Program. Greensboro has a long and strong working relationship with NC DEQ and appreciates its guidance and assistance in our efforts. Through these partnerships, the city fully commits to developing a management strategy to further reduce the release of 1-4 dioxane into waterways that may potentially impact downstream communities who rely on the Hall River and Cape Fear River for their source water. For more information, please visit the city of Greensboro's Water Resources Department online at greensboro-nc.gov/water.
For 1414 West County Boulevard, South of West County Boulevard, and West of Clayborne Street.
Any other comments? The offices that are listed above, and the grant conditions that are on that request. Current condition number four, buildings within 35 feet to 70 feet of the right-of-way of Clayborne Street shall have a maximum height of 45 feet. And then, as viewed from Clayborne Street, the buildings shall not exceed 37 feet in height and may not contain more than two dwelling floors on the side closest to Clayborne Street. It's the two dwelling floors on the side closest to Clayborne Street that is, that the applicant will discuss, and they are requesting that the, through a type-through modification, they're requesting that the condition be changed to buildings within 35 feet to 70 feet of the right-of-way of Clayborne Street shall have a maximum height of 45 feet. As viewed from Clayborne Street, these buildings shall not exceed 37 feet in height. Now I'll let Ms. Jackson come and explain the rest of the request. Do you have any questions for staff? Okay.
Make sure I understand this, right? All they're doing is eliminating the two-dwelling height from the original, because they figured out that they've got some...
Some constraints. Yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's just removing that restriction.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Did the applicant care to? If you'd give your name and address, please.
Caitlin Jackson, Leesville Duggins, 400 Bellamy Street, Suite 800. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Well, there's no need to close the public hearing.
There is no public hearing.
That's right, so, can I, does anybody have any questions? I mean, I'm sorry.
I don't, you're satisfied, Ms. Gaines? You understood? Yeah, okay.
Can I, can I just move that we...
Please go ahead and make a motion.
I would, I would move that we accept this modification.
Second, Ms. Magid. Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Magid. All those in favor of accepting the modification, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed that carries, thank you very much. We have street closures? We have item PLP 24-29, request to close a section of Standard Drive that bisects 215 Standard Drive by approximately 778 feet.
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the exhibit that is shown, or that is presented for closing of a portion of Standard Drive. This is a portion of Standard Drive that bisects 215, the address is 215 Standard Drive, approximately 778 feet. The owners signing the petition make up 100% of the landowners along the street, that is a valid application. Under this configuration, there would be required two turnarounds at the end. This is, there's a little bit of a timing issue with this one, the property to the northwest, as you see it, will also be requesting the Standard Drive closure, but because the timing is off, we have to take into consideration what happens if that one doesn't get closed. So, the Technical Review Committee recommended approval of closing the street with three conditions. The street closure is not final until a plat is recorded, satisfying the conditions below, and showing the area within the right-of-way to be closed within the remainder of, and added on to the remainder of 2000, or 215 Standard Drive. And then, number two, where required, stormwater drainage easement shall be dedicated on the plat. There was private stormwater in this area of the street closure, and so they wanted to maintain, make sure that the easement is shown on the plat. And then, three is where we get into the, kind of the two options here. So, in accordance with Greensboro Department of Transportation standards, turnarounds are required at the ends of both remaining sections of Standard Drive. If the section of Standard Drive connecting to Little Santee Road is closed, then the northwest turnaround may also be closed and is not required. All of the residential structures, if all of the residential structures are removed from the property and a gate is installed at the point where Standard Drive crosses the western property line of 215 Standard Drive, then the northwest turnaround is not required. And that's in the event that that remaining portion of Standard Drive is not closed. So again, there's the timing issue there of those two, and we just want to make sure that if one does not get closed, that, that the contingency plan is built into this request to meet city standards.
So what do we expect to do?
Make a recommendation to either approve or deny the street closure request. You're, you're recommending to city council with the conditions.
Okay, Ms. Magid has a question?
I've got a question. Are we talking about this area right here?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, okay, and the turnaround would be down here?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions?
No. I would make a motion that we approve.
Thank you.
The street closing with the recommendations applied.
And we've got Mr. Downing that made the...
I did it too fast, but second.
So, Mr. Engel, Mr. Downing, thank you, we have a motion to approve the recommended street closing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed that carries? And... Thank you. We, we thought we had a fan club. Thank you. Thank you very much. We do still have a few items. We are due an annual report regarding the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, a public hearing on the draft city of Greensboro fiscal year 2023 to 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, otherwise known as CAPR. So we have staff to present that?
Yes, we do, I'm just gonna pull up their presentation.
Good evening. Good to see you all again this year.
Yes, you received the Endurance Award.
I was just told I got some flex time, so hey, it worked out perfectly, so thank you. So thank you again for allowing us to have our public hearing at your meeting. My name is Shante Fleming, I am the Community Development Analyst at Housing and Neighborhood Development. I have a brief presentation on our fiscal year 2324 CAPR, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report that we submit to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, at the end of September, or 90 days after the fiscal year ends. So this report is for July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. So here are the amounts of HUD funding that were awarded for fiscal year 2324. This does not include any other funding, I think last year there was a question about if this report includes treasury dollars... I think last year there was a question about if this report includes treasury dollars, so I had to do my research, but this does not. We're only going to be reporting on these funds here that are listed. So for fiscal year 2324, for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, we received $2,411,572. For Home Investment Partnership Program, which is home, we received $1,673,037. For Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, we received $208,732. And for Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS/HOPE, we received $1,256,676. So that was a total of $5,550,17. We also received program income during fiscal year 23, and that was $542,096. So total funding of $66,092,113. So here are the amounts of expenditures for fiscal year 2023. Other types of funds were also used for some projects, but these are the specific amounts that were spent from these specific funds. So for CDBG, we spent $1,344,167.16. CDBG CV, because we are still spending funds that were received from the pandemic, that's $271,545.95 for home. $2,202,587.25 for home art. We spent $22,716.40 for ESG, $260,516.15. ESG CV, $173,936.71. For HOPE, $209,186.61. And for HOPE CV, $15,197.13. So total expended was $4,588,533.36. So here are the projects that federal funds were used towards in fiscal year 2324. Some projects may have received other funding also. For multifamily construction, so currently we have over 300 units that are in progress that federal funds were used towards. Home buyer education and assistance, 12 home buyers received direct down payment and closing cost assistance in the amount of $180,000. Redevelopment projects, federal funds were used towards a community market. Led safe federal funds were used towards six homes being made led safe, park renovations, tenant-based rental assistance, rapid rehousing, and homeless overnight shelter. So we are still collecting data. We will have final numbers in our final CAPR at the end of the month, but here are numbers that we have collected so far for homeless prevention and emergency assistance. I will like to note that our department's annual report will reflect larger numbers of households served, because that includes accomplishments from all the funding sources that we received and that we spent. So for medium-term rental assistance, 179 households were served. For emergency shelter, we had 946 people. Permanent housing placement, we had 15 people, so that's a total of 1,140 people or households. And for emergency assistance, rent and utility assistance, we had 46 households served. For mortgage assistance, we had 56 households served, and that's a total of 102 households. So our draft CAPR is available at www greensboro-nc.gov/capr. And at this time, we'll welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for your report. Do we have any questions? We're to have a public hearing on this. Are there any other comments? Is there anybody who would like to speak on this? Without objection, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we need to take a vote on this, or we just received the report?
It's my understanding that the commission's role is just to take public comment if any is offered.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other plant, items from the planning department?
We do not.
Okay.
We have two rezonings and two street closures next month. Two street closures next month and two rezonings next month.
As well as the Randall Monroe Plan?
Yes, the Randall Monroe Plan as well. Yes. Enjoy.
All right. We, we also then have to address item 11 on our agenda, which is election of the chair and vice chair. And I had a 15-minute oration prepared to talk about how much I have appreciated and enjoyed being vice chair and then chair of the commission for of the five years I've already served, and I'm looking forward to having another, but I am also looking forward to having a new chair, not in the face of tonight's meeting, but I had made that decision earlier. I do appreciate the people that I have worked with in this capacity, and I have to say that I truly feel that the current commission that we have and the work that we've done with staff and with city council to move us forward, I really think that this is the strongest and the best planning and zoning commission ever. I really feel strongly that the people that we have here bring a great deal of insight and purpose to our work, so I appreciate that very much. And Brent said that he would handle our elections.
Glad to do it. Promise I'll be brief. So we'll go ahead and vote, obviously, for chair and then vice chair thereafter. So for chair specifically, does anybody want to put forward a nomination?
Yes, I would like to make a nomination.
Okay.
I, it would be my honor and privilege, truly, to nominate Catherine Aggott for chair.
Okay. And just before we check on any other potential nominations, do we have anybody to second that one?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations?
Move to close the nomination.
There we go. Well, let's go ahead and take a vote on that real quick to name Commissioner Maggott chair. Hold favorite. That looks unanimous. Sorry for the formality. All right. Commissioner Maggott, there you go. Of course.
I'd like to thank everyone for the vote of confidence, but I'd just like to say that you took my words out of my mouth, because I was going to say exactly what you said about how, how we are a commission that is doing great work and are continuing to do great work, and we have a lot of wonderful mentors, people with terrific experience who have joined us and are guiding us and teaching us, and I'm thrilled about that. So, thank you. And, thank you for three years of wonderful leadership.
That's right, and wear Max Lannell shirts.
There we go. Now, we'll go ahead and pivot to the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Maria Skeens as vice chair.
All right. And do we have anybody to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Quickly, do we have any other nominations? All right, sounds like we'll go ahead and close that, and just for formality's sake, can we go ahead and do the vote on, on that? Naming Commissioner Skeens as vice chair. It's unanimous, and there we go. Commissioner Skeens, vice chair. I don't know if you want to say anything, Commissioner Skeens, but...
Mary, did you want to say anything?
But, but before we go, we, I'd just like to say, we, we are losing a very dear member who has, yes? Oh, he's coming, he's coming.
He isn't anticipating the replacement coming anytime now. I don't know.
Okay, well...
Thank you all very much.
In, in case he's not here, thank you so much, Zach, for your service, for your service, your insights, your help, and we'll be, we'll all be calling you.
Yes. So the meeting is adjourned.